They're in harmony, even when there is no honest agreement. Father, we pray for personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. And Father, I pray today for the agenda, that you would just give an assurance of what would please you and honor you and that would benefit those who live and work in and around the city of Bradenton. I pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Thank you Commissioner. All right, this morning's workshop, or today's workshop, depending on how long we go. First part of it is going to be about developmental services and it's going to be a Manti County Comprehensive Plan rewrite. And Ms. Knapp, you're up. What we'll do is we're going to hold public comment after each section. So after developmental services get done, if there's anyone in the public would like to come forward and give a public comment at that time. And then same will do after we do the public safety briefing, after the development service is done. So Ms. Knapp, you're up.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services. And as the Chairman said, we're here today to discuss the upcoming comp plan rewrite. We began this project just about a year ago last week. And so through that year, we've held individual Commissioner briefings, community engagement, both in person and online. We've done a gap analysis and, you know, looking for consistencies with the Florida statute. And we are nearing the end of the project. We have about six months left on the project timeline before we will be in front of you all for seeking adoption. And so over the next six months, we wanted to build in, again, more public comment on proposed text language and to seek more board involvement. So today's workshop is a very important last step, if you will, in that process, looking to, again, to collect more data, if you will, as we go to put together the last of the proposed text on policy, goals, objectives, and policies. So we've been working under our consultant, as you're aware, Kim Lee Horn. And today here with us is Kelly Klepper and his team. They will lead the presentation and the healthy discussion alongside with Rachel Layton, our Comprehensive Division Manager here today to also engage. So I will, at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you Nicole. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And I'm our team's project lead. And as you all know, I'm also a Manti County resident. Proud to be a Manti County resident for over 19 years. So love working in the community that I'm actually being able to live in and vice versa. So what we want to do today is we're going to go through and provide a high level assessment of where we are, what we've been doing over the past year. And also there again, it's very, very important, as Nicole said, and also as the Chairman said, we want to seek guidance and direction. We've been, as Nicole said, at this for about a year. There's been some staff changeover, new staff coming in, old staff retiring. So, you know, we've been working through that process. And I will say that Rachel has been phenomenal. I've said this previously and I will continue to say it again. Rachel and Charles have been critical links to everything that we're doing as that county kind of gatekeeper, helping us ensure that we're getting the information in a timely manner and also providing some consistency in some of that messaging. I know we've got, I will say, a little bit of a window, Mr. Chairman. And what I would say is, we're going to go through some baseline information as far as what we've heard and what we've done up to this point. Then we're going to dive into each of the elements. It is definitely as a work session, it is your discretion to ask questions along the way. We would encourage you to do so. Just keep in mind, we are going to be going through each of the elements. And specifically, we of course have plugged in some additional time in our schedules to be able to address, we know that kind of a couple of the big three elements being future land use, transportation, and I will say also housing and/or coastal and conservation. So when we start looking at what we've done and where we've been, of course, you all have a number of elements. Some of these, of course, are all mandated by the state. When I say some, I should say all of these. There are components of this that require certain amounts of coordination with other agencies. And you'll see that kind of reflected in a number of our general comments as we're going through. As a quick reference, where we are, and I'll, staff has a copy of this as well, this is your comprehensive plan. It is 11 by 17. It is double sided. It's every goal, objective, policy that you have with an individual assessment, whether it is sufficient based off of the state statutes, if there are conflicts with state statutes, if there's conflicts with other elements, or if it's more of a code-related land development code type of provision, which really should not be in your comprehensive plan. Couple of the things that we've been looking at as we've been doing this, of course, is what should really be in the comprehensive plan versus what should be in the code. State statutes actually say the comp plan is not the code. It's very clearly articulated in the opening components of Chapter 163 of the state statutes as it relates to comprehensive plans. So what we've been working on there, again, this was our initial scope and trying to get you an identification and an understanding of, we're reviewing every single goal, objective policy you have, every element. We're looking at your mapping. We're looking at the land uses. We're looking at a number of different things. But then also starting to kind of look at, like it says on the screen, collecting that data and analysis component. The plan has to be informed by a number of things. And that's the reason you'll see us talk about or hear us sometimes reference either a DIA, and that is just simply the data inventory and analysis. That's the information that is supplemental to the comprehensive plan itself, but that's what we're using to inform a lot of what we're doing. Some of the data components that we've been working on, of course, are population, and we're going to talk about that. Some of it deals with coordination and information that's been provided and published by Florida Department of Transportation, as well as some of the other agencies, including SWFMA and DEP and those components. As Rachel said, we did host a series of community workshops. We had five workshops around the county. We gathered a tremendous amount of information through those processes, so in person as well as an online survey. After today, you know, we're going to start, like I said, revising and crafting a language. And then there will be another round of community outreach, both in person as well as online. So there again, this isn't the only, that was not the only opportunity for the community to provide comments. This is not your only opportunity to provide us comments. Of course, you all have the final say in what is transmitted and ultimately adopted through this process. We have prepared that matrix. So there again, that kind of report card and a guiding document, so that as changes are being made, it's not just showing up as a revised component within the text itself, but there's a record of what the recommendation was by our team of professionals and our subject matter experts, but then also county staffs, experts, providing feedback or comments from there. So that way, when somebody comes back and asks in a year or two years, why was this changed? You'll see that initial recommendation as well as the response from staff. So there again, we're creating that record for the future, so that you're not having to ask, or staff's not having to ask themselves, why did this change? We don't know. So there again, all of this is going to be created as part of this process. So I'm going to tell you a couple of things that you already know quite well. We're growing. We are a growing community. We have been growing. I don't think we've ever slowed down as a community. We actually did get this information from Nelson and the transportation team, just starting to look at, what are some of the population estimates? This is a critical component, because as we're talking about land use, and we're talking about transportation, when we start talking about parks, when we talk about a lot of your levels of service and infrastructure and those components, we need to understand from a very, I'll say, very high level, where's the population coming and where's it going? What's even more critical is to start looking at, right now, we're about 400, a little over 420,000 residents. And this is, you know, full-time seasonal as well, within the county. Over the next 20 years, which is the requirement through the state statutes to perform the analysis through what they call the planning horizon, we're talking about an additional 130, 140,000 potential residents coming to this community. That is a tremendous amount of growth, but this is not unheard of. Other communities up and down the 75 corridor are experiencing very similar amounts of growth. When you start looking at Sarasota County, when you look at Lee County, when you look at Collier, when you start looking at some of the communities on the east coast along the 95 corridor, they all are seeing tremendous amounts of growth. Areas that are not seeing the levels of growth that we have are, there again, more towards the center portions of the state, and the Hardees, the DeSotos, and some of the other communities. We start looking at some of the ones up around the Big Bend area, you know, they're still seeing growth, but not to the level that we are here. So there again, we're trying to make sure that we are providing enough options for this population. And it goes across the board from not just housing, but there again, transportation as well as parks and recreation, for example. And then more importantly, making sure that we have enough infrastructure, solid waste. You know, my garbage gets picked up twice a week, where does it go? Well, we all know where it goes, but at some point, that's going to run out. But there's a number of studies that have been undertaken by the county, and we applaud you for doing that. You are actually being more proactive than a lot of communities we talk to with some of your solid waste calculations, your water and wastewater master plans, looking at some of your long-range transportation plans. This community has taken a lot of effort to understand what's going on and kind of start planning to the future. Is it always popular? No. Is it always, I'll say, easy? No. But there again, that analysis gets rolled into the comprehensive plan, and everything that we talk about has to be consistent as we're moving forward with that. Just to kind of, I'm not going to dive too much into this, just at this point, when we start thinking about where is that geographic center of the county? You know, when we start thinking about and going back to, you know, the 1950s, where was it? Well, pretty much right where we are right now, downtown Bradenton and this kind of core area. As the areas have continued to grow and develop, and of course, you know, with the development and success of places like Lakewood Ranch, and then some of the communities along the I-75 corridor, that geographic center has consistently shifted further to the east. And right now, it's about I-75 in between 64 and 70. With the, you know, the inclusion of the North River Ranch, we anticipate that that geographic center over the next 20 years will continue to kind of shift a little bit further east, we're assuming to the east side of I-75, but further back to the north to accommodate, because, you know, the number of homes and potential population residents that we have coming into that portion of the county. So when we started to roll out the workshops, there again, we had five workshops scheduled throughout the county. We had a number of those that were both in person, but also what we called hybrid. We had somebody sitting there on the computer, being able to not only share the presentation, but also take questions, provide responses, and kind of interact with those that were calling in or logging into the process. It's a very successful way of making sure that, you know, if somebody is not able to attend a meeting, that they have the ability to sit at home and provide us comments and talk with somebody versus just leaving a standard comment and not knowing, did it get received or what's the disposition of that? So there again, we had somebody physically sitting during, I think it was three of these, that was a hybrid type of meeting, to where myself and our core team was doing an in-person presentation, asking questions and receiving input, and then somebody online as well, being able to receive real-time comments and questions. There again, this is probably something that you see every day, every month, is a lot of part of your workshops and hearings, the big takeaways that we heard and also received through the online surveys and information. Keys were protection of our environmental components, the conservation areas, traffic and congestion. That's not, I'll say, specific to Sarasota, excuse me, Manti County, because Sarasota faces the exact same thing. It's not different than anywhere that we're dealing with right now. Parks and open spaces. We have a tremendous amount of parks and recreation areas, more so than a lot of communities across the state, but just making sure that those opportunities are there and different opportunities. And then, of course, the overarching development and growth. We can't stop growth. Growth is going to continue. We cannot put up a wall. Of course, there's also some things at the state legislature level that have precluded local context as far as some of the growth and development, also for some of the transportation related items. We can work to manage, but we cannot prohibit in a lot of these cases. There's also a number of state statutes that have been adopted recently, and we're going to talk about a couple of those, that start to further dive into a couple of these, especially from the development and the growth perspective, things like the Live Local Act, things that have been coming across from the legislature over the past couple of years that have started to impact what we do in transportation is a key component of this as well. I want to pause for just a second, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, and to see if there's any questions from the board.
Any questions so far? Thank you Kelly.
Okay. So where are we in the process? As Nicole said, you know, we've been at this for a little bit of time. We are scheduled to be back before you with a formal series of policies and updates and maps, addressing, there again, those changes that have occurred since the last major update that you've had. We intentionally, you know, have been looking at a number of things, the state statutes, consistency, code components. Some of the things are very simple and easy, it's just even as small as getting the right agency's name correct. Doesn't sound like a big deal, but it is a big deal, especially to those folks sitting up in Tallahassee, especially with the, what was formerly the Department of Community Affairs, that of course went to the Department of Economic Opportunity, and now is Florida Commerce. They'd like to make sure that their names are getting spelled correctly in these documents as well. So there again, we're going to be coming back through this process. It is a formal process to provide both the matrices, as well as strike through and underline versions of this, as well as clean copies. Upon recommendation by this body, it'll get transmitted to the state. The state has a period of time to review, and then we'll be looking for adoption at that point. Now, does this mean that you all are precluded from undertaking any additional comprehensive plan amendments or map amendments or anything during this process? No. To the contrary. You know, there are things that still need to be processed outside of this review through this evaluation and appraisal report process. You're still needing to move forward with, you know, dealing with certain types of projects or addressing those things that are coming from Tallahassee as part of some of the legislative updates. So as those are starting to come about, we're trying to make sure we're rolling those into this assessment. At some point, we will have to, of course, put a kind of, put the brakes on some of that and just note that, you know, that will need to be undertaken under a separate amendment. Two big considerations that we, of course, are working with and, you know, doing work all across the state. I will tell you for a fact that Sarah's in a difficult position here, especially when it comes to these first two items, which is, of course, Senate Bill 250, as well as the Live Local considerations. These were, of course, state mandated components that came about. The first one actually was extended to 2026 with this most recent legislative update. And when I say we're working with a number of communities across the state and municipal attorneys, I can count on both hands how many different opinions I've received on both of these items as far as the application and implementation of that. What I like to do and basically to say is, you know, what is, what is the legal discussion? What is the standing that this county and this community wants to take? And what in the county attorney's opinion is defensible? I'm a land use planner. I am not an attorney. I'm going to provide recommendations. However, at the end of the day, the county attorney's office is going to be the ones providing that information as far as the interpretation and what we can and cannot do. There again, a number of communities we've talked to have said, when I say literally, they've gone, we don't know. When it came to Live Local when it first was rolled out, yes, there was an update most recently, started to clarify some of that, but there's still a lot of kind of gray areas in that. And then the, you know, the Senate Bill 250, that more restrictive or the more burdensome, how is that actually being interpreted? Is it specifically at the code level or also at the comp plan level? To change definitions or change the way you do things, of course, you know, taking rights away would definitely be considered by some to be more burdensome. To expand or increase that could be viewed as the same, depending on the situation. So I know that Rachel has been coordinating directly with the county attorney's office on these two. And as we're continuing to move forward, of course, we're keeping an eye on both of these, you know, especially with respect to the more burdensome component. Property rights considerations continue to be an area of emphasis, but also starting to look at some of those linkages there. Again, this is something where we've been talking and working, we actually had a joint work session with staff from planning and transportation to make sure that as some of the things that we're talking about from a land use perspective, how are those marrying up and how will they impact transportation and vice versa? Adam Kerr, who is our transportation lead on this one, has been working closely with Clark and Nelson and the staff, talking about transportation concurrency, as well as some of the Department of Transportation's context, solutions, and classifications for roadways. We've got a number of items that we're going to talk through, especially from an example standpoint, here in just a few minutes. So to start to dive into each of the elements, future land use. You know, this is there again, very, very high level. This isn't the only thing that we found, kind of going through this element. But, you know, there are multiple references to some form of compatibility. Compatibility is not clearly identified or defined, and some of it becomes this gray area, or it's up to the interpretation of whoever is sitting in the chair at that point. Almost becomes one of those beauties in the eye of the beholder. But from a compatibility standpoint, we basically noted that there was not a consistent kind of approach throughout the comprehensive plan. So that's one of the components that we've identified and recommended as part of a general update. Mixed use. Mixed use is a big issue. What constitutes mixed use? Existing development versus proposed types of development? Are there minimums and maximums? Right now, you don't have real clarity on the minimum and maximum components. And we've got a couple of examples that I'm going to show you that we've worked on with a number of communities around the state to try to help ease some of that. But there again, depends on some of this legal interpretation as we're moving forward with that. And then again, that, like I said, that House Bill 250 is always kind of hanging out there as we are moving forward. So some of the things that we think about as we're going through the future land use, and there again, I've got a couple of examples, could be viewed as being more options and encouragement. This is what a number of the communities have done across the state to say, hey, you know, by the way, we're increasing the availability, but at the same time, there's also some limitations on what we were trying to do. And there again, the other thing is the comprehensive plan provides a level of guidance. The actual application and implementation of a lot of this, of course, is within the land development code. Minor kind of cleanup, there's different terms that are used throughout the comprehensive plan. There again, just trying to make sure it's consistent. There's also, like we see here right now, multiple references to broad policies that identifies the format of designations and what they should include. There's a lot of repetition that could be very easily taken out and just put at one portion of the comprehensive plan. And that way, it's, you know, you're removing a lot of different things that are just being repeated over and over and over again. That also is an opportunity, if you start to modify that regulation, that you're creating inconsistencies with other portions of the comprehensive plan. And then also, there's a lot of references to density as far as gross versus net. That was one of the things that we started asking early on, especially of staff of, within this situation, you know, gross density versus net density. How is net density being determined and defined? And there, you know, for the most part, there is a general standard as far as what we are looking at, but there is the need to clarify how the density is being defined and what constitutes density at that point. These are a couple of the examples that we wanted to talk about from a mixed use perspective. What we've done is worked on a number of communities. This one is actually your neighbor to the south city of Venice. Oh.
Chris Cruz has got a question.
Oh, sorry. You know, creating there again, the opportunity for minimums and maximums as far as trade-offs are concerned from a rez to a non-residential component. That way, that there is a true definition of mixed use included within the comprehensive plan. And that plan policy and related policies informs the land development code on what constitutes, is it the type of use? Is it a mixture of uses? What are some of those trade-offs, the minimums and maximums that are established for each of those? And there again, part of that goes back to that link with, between land use and transportation as well, because, you know, if we can create some true mixed use, then we do start to look at some of that internal capture. Now, where we start to get a little interesting is, if we don't define mixed use correctly, are we truly getting a level of internal capture? And that's where, there again, we're trying to make sure we define what is that in some of those uses and some of those percentages. There again, this is one example that we've used, and we actually developed this working with the city of Venice. We've done this also with Indian River County and also with Port Orange and a couple of the other comprehensive plans. Another form? Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see your hand Commissioner.
Well, now I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
The first one, I probably could have asked a few sides ago. You keep talking about, and I talked about this in the briefings, about land development code, transportation plan, future land use map, which I'm told we're not working on. We're not necessarily doing these all concurrently, right? I mean, what's our broader timeline? Are we doing these all simultaneous? Is this a broad discussion on all things, changes to our comprehensive plan and land development code and so forth? Or is your presentation more focused specific to the policies?
To the comprehensive plan policies itself.
Okay. Because obviously, they all intertwine, and one doesn't Okay, because obviously they all intertwine, and one doesn't work without the others. That's why we have
Correct.
Multiple documents. Okay, because like to go, do we have a timeline of when this will be entirely done? I mean, we're going to make changes to this comprehensive plan that aren't going to be as effective as we would like until the land development code changes to allow people to implement comprehensive land. Always, we're going to say, "Look what we did to these corridors," but you still can only build three units. Like, that doesn't do anybody any good regardless of what policy we put in there. Do we have a general timeline for when this in its entirety is going to be ready to go?
Great question, and I'm also going to defer to, a little bit to Nicole if I say something incorrect. The original discussion that we had with staff was, you know, as we got into, I'll say, that 75% level of the comprehensive plan, that would provide enough assurance and certainty and direction of staff to start updating the land development code so that there was not, wait till this, the comprehensive plan is adopted later this year, and then you start the code component?
Okay.
Because that's going to take a year to two years to do that.
Okay, so they're somewhat being done concurrently, but not co-terminous. Like one, the comp plan is going to be done and adopted prior to the land development code. There's going to be a window of time where there's some gray area. Okay. Relative to this, are we open just to having discussions about thoughts on policies and whatnot?
Absolutely.
Is that what we're doing here? Because we talked about this at my briefing.
Well, and I was going to say, and I guess the question I want to confirm is because I know, and for, because this is your workshop, do we want to take, do we want to do it as we're doing each element at the end? I just, I just want to be respectful.
And it's relevant to the slides though. I mean, I just figure work session wise, we kind of just have open forum, but I'll defer to you.
Back and forth is fine because it's just so broad and so intense. There's a lot of information here. I don't want to have to wait to the end and then one of the commissioners, you know, if they, just let me know how you want to answer a question.
No, that, that works for me. I just want to make sure there again, that we reserve, because you know, future land use and transportation, we know are going to be the big ones.
Yeah.
We know we've got about three hours plus with you all this morning, so this is your time. We're here to answer questions as we go or
Yeah, because I just want to throw out some thoughts. Again, I've talked to staff about my thoughts, but we haven't talked as a board. Here's the thing with mixed use, you know, I'll stick to the topic based on the slide. I've been on record for three straight years hating the mixed use density bonus. I think it's, it's a ridiculous bonus and incentive. You know, our incentive should match what the community needs, and we have an affordable housing density bonus already. Mixed use, we're already giving somebody free commercial, but then we give them free units for using free commercial. It's double dipping, I believe, and it's dissuading people from using the density bonus that I think we should be focusing people's attention on, because that's where the issue is. However, I think almost everything should be mixed use. I think a community is better when everything is mixed use. We're practical. I think every building we build that's over a certain height should have retail on the ground floor. I just think that makes for a better, a better community. So one of the thoughts I had was, why not get rid of the mixed use density bonus and just come up with a metric that effectively gives sites commercial as of right, which we're effectively doing with the density bonus anyway. And basically, we just made up numbers, but like for every 50 residential units, every 100 residential units, you get X amount of square feet of commercial as of right to build along the frontage. I think that encourages more retail, more employment centers, and encourages things closer to housing and residential areas. It takes cars off the road. It allows a subdivision to have a Starbucks and something, you know, in front of it. And it allows the homeowners the right to know what's going to be in front of them, and they're not getting something pulled out from under them where an open space turns into a potential retail center because they know ahead of time. Developers don't have to use it. They may feel their subdivisions better with, with fountains and gates in front. That's perfectly fine. This isn't a requirement. They're not getting an incentive for it. We're just giving them some, some option for free. I think it makes for a better community, and instead, we take away the density bonus associated with mixed income, or mixed use. I just think that's a better way of building in its entirety. That's just my personal opinion. So I was just throwing that out there.
I'm standing there taking notes, and I know my team is as well. I mean, I can respond to some of that with some thoughts, or we kind of keep going?
I'm curious. You showed examples of Venice and Sarasota. I'm curious if anyone else does something like that where there's a metric that gives somebody the, the as-of-right ability to build some level of commercial associated with certain levels of residential. Not, not to get more residential, but just to get more commercial, because I don't want to become a bedroom community with nothing but houses and car washes.
So the one thing that I will tell you is that one size does not fit all. There's not a universal formula that is for every 100 units, you get this. It becomes down to what is the community's preference. There is a lot more analysis that can go into that. I will tell you that where we've run into some issues or some challenges, and we ran into this with Sarasota County some time ago, was where they said, "Okay, you cannot have, you know, once you get above a certain number of residential, thou shall have commercial, and it shall be centrally located within the community." Talking with a number of real estate professionals, we have some in our firm, and I have friends across the country have said, you know, one, those types of standards are fairly arbitrary, and then also you start creating additional restrictions on the viability of that commercial.
Understood, but to be fair, I said may, not shall.
Exactly.
That's an important difference.
No, and that's right. I wrote down option with may. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the spirit of what he's saying. I think there's an efficiency aspect to it for the applicant and for staff as well, and the may, not shall is key, because I don't want to be, you know, we don't want to be heavy-handed. I don't want to be overly burdensome with regulation either. So I think there's a balance that, that you can find.
And that's exactly the reason I wrote may and option, and I did double underline beside both of those. Now, it's a very valid observation and very valid question and concern, especially in community this size. And I think personally that there is room for improvement within your mixed use.
It's just the thing is, the more we can make everything as-of-right, the more we can make everything administrative, the more we can make it where people have an assurance of what they can build, the faster and cheaper and more efficiently they're going to build things. And if we do it in a way where we're providing incentives or options that are beneficial to the community, then they're inherently building what's in the best interest of the future Manatee County. And the less they have to keep coming in front of us and asking for stipulations and approvals and, you know, additions and so forth, the better it is for all of us up on this board, the better it is for the community to know what to expect in the future. So I think everything we do in this comp plan should be based upon as of, people having assurance of as-of-right development that's also in the best interest of the community. And I think that's one of them.
Thank you.
Great comments.
Go ahead.
So this was another one of the options. This was actually through Sarasota County 2050, which for those of you who are familiar with this one, I know Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, you, you've worked on this one quite a bit. This one was an interesting one at the outset because it was trying to identify an alternative form of development outside of the urban services, their version of the urban services area, which is your F-DAP, and said, "Okay, within these three core areas," and they got real creative, and I, and I've made this same bad dad joke to counterparts down south of, there was the North Village, the Central Village, and the South Village. And all of those were based off of, and there again, this is my personal opinion, English Planning Principles. It talks about the village. It's going to have certain types of aspects that are required for different types of housing and those ratios and some of those other things. There was also what they did, called out, which was a hamlet, which was a different form. And then there was the settlements, which was kind of exactly what it said, which was a settlement between the village and the hamlet based off of a lot of the public input that came about. That plan was adopted back, I think it was, started being rolled out early 2000s. First project that actually came out of the ground for the village was one that I worked on, and it was called Grand Palm. That was done in 2010, 2011 timeframe. As part of that project, we actually had over 40 different modifications and text amendments to the code and the comp plan because we couldn't make it work. But since that time, staff has done a tremendous amount of work to refine and make it more flexible. There again, some of this by right, and also kind of addressing some of the affordable housing initiatives that the state has adopted as part of this process as well. But there again, they're still providing some of those minimum and maximums. They still have minimums and maximums as far as the numbers and the types of housing that's required within some of these areas. That if you're going to have a commercial component, there needs to be these levels, and they're very broad levels. So there's enough room to be able to work in without being so stringent to where you have to come back before like bodies like this to ask for modifications because you've run out of retail space or office space. There again, the ratios are fairly broad, and it makes, there again, it's, allows the developments to be, I'll say, a little bit more interesting, and also respond and reflect market conditions across the board. But there again, this is another one of the forms that has been identified. We've worked on a number there again, across the state as well as, with some of my work across the Southeastern United States as far as just opening up the alleys and the, and the avenues for folks to be creative at the comprehensive plan and the code level. There again, you've got to have that right tool and enough broadness to be able to do exactly what we're talking about here with some of those provisions, and with the key being may and the option as well. That's all for the future land use at this point. We're going to be diving into conservation in just a second.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Turner.
Nicole, do we have an example of something like this for North River Ranch? Because that, that's like a, that's a planned thing. I don't know how many hoops we, not for this, for the purpose of this, but that looks like a good model that we could use moving forward. For how many hoops? How did, how'd the entitlement go on that one?
Commissioner Turner, we don't have, we didn't evaluate that before today, but we can as part of the exercise after today's conversation for sure.
I don't want to make more work, but it just seemed like
It's not more work. Usually it's healthy.
Is somebody else's mic on?
Yeah, something's feeding back.
Turn your mic on.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay.
There's feedback, which means somebody else's is on.
Yeah.
I just think it might be worth the exercise. Let me move back here. Because that, it's got that mixed use, and it's serving the community while it's very popular. And when I'm looking at it, it also looks like a really good balanced plan.
Yeah, we don't disagree. I talked to Rachel before stepping up to the mic, and we'll look at that with Kelly as part of the exercise. Yeah, it seems to be the feedback is perhaps only over one mic, because it wasn't doing it with Commissioner Cruz when he talked, so.
Keep my phones away. It's my, she's thinking it might be.
And, and just to be clear for future, Mike's not there, so we can't put herself on the board. We're not making any modifications to the future land use map. Is that correct?
Correct. We are making recommendations regarding some of that, but we are not undertaking map amendments. That was a discussion we had very early on in the process because of the timing and being able to move through the policies. And there again, it becomes down to an individual property rights component and not trying to re-designate somebody's property without their consent. Or to the contrary, what we've also seen is where we have open season on land use amendments, and it really starts to slow down the process.
I understand not slowing down the process, and I can appreciate that, but is that something at some point being contemplated to do, even if it's after the, I mean, here's, here's the thing. That is, that map is so old that things that, like Lakewood Ranch was like a glimmer in someone's eye when that map was on. It's, it's everything east of 75, everything north of the river. It's way different. And we still have people coming to us that have ag property, future land use R3, in every parcel around us, an apartment complex. And then we get asked, "Will you upzone it?" And we get yelled at for upzoning it, but I'm like, "That shouldn't be R3 in the first place." That, that hasn't been R3 since 2012, but that, that's what it is. And, and more to the point about the future use, which is why I bring it up now, is, you know, we don't want to continuously see everyone go as far as the eye can see with UF3 east and north. We need to start steering things back and encouraging redevelopment and more density and more of these housing units where they should be, but we still have corridors that are massively outdated in terms of people's rights. And like I said, the more people has, have as-of-right development, the better off we'll be. So you don't have to rezone anyone's stuff. That's what the map's for. It's future. Like, we're not rezoning anyone. We're not jacking their taxes because we're swooping in from under them and changing it to R20 or R50 or whatever. What we're doing is basically just saying, "You have a right to do this in the future." You can even have a third tier. You could say it's, it's ag today, it's R3 based on the current map, and then the 2024, 2025 map gives you a future land use point two of R9. And people can still elect the middle one, but at least it gives somebody some confidence if they're planning something out that they can get to that R9 and not have to come in front of a board, which can make whatever decision depending on how many emails you got. I just think that's an important element to this if we're going to implement it, if we're going to try to direct the community to develop in a way that makes the most sense, that having that map changed at some point, and I could, again, I can appreciate how many emails you'll get and how many people are going to want meetings, because you basically get a free comp plan change by, by changing a color on a map. But at some point, I hope we're going to entertain updating that, because again, it's massively, massively outdated right now.
Rachel Layton for staff. I want to take part of that question, but I of course will rely on Kelly's expertise. There, today, there are about four different corridors that have been identified since I've been brought on to the county staff, that we're going to start evaluating this summer. With, as Kelly is developing all of these different changes that we need to implement for the categories, I think we need to maybe look at a few different categories so that we can look at maybe a broader sweep of, of the properties that are budding, the future development area boundary, which we're also not including in this rewrite, because that requires additional studies to be done by different departments within the county that are in progress. So there's a lot of work to be done to study these corridors, and then to invite those property owners to be part of the process in changing their future land use map amendment, even as county initiated. We want to make sure that we're following all the steps so that first you'll see the comprehensive plan update come forward for transmittal and adoption, and then you'll see some of these map amendments come forward. And at the same time, hopefully, we'll also be bringing forward the land development code text amendments so that we have everything in short order so that we're able to minimize the gap in time between comprehensive plan update and map amendments and LDC. So it is, we've been busy trying to restaff comprehensive planning to make sure that we have the right people in place to get this work done in alignment with the consultant, and we will be relying on Kelly and his team for a lot of this work as well. But it is gratefully moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate you guys always giving us an amazing brief description on what you guys have going on. My only input on this, and we've had this discussion before, where I've looked at other cities across the United States, and I've, I've seen cities that don't do any zoning at all. And we've had that discussion on that. We need to have, obviously, from the last 30 years, we've had to make a lot of changes as they've come up, right? A lot of rezones, a lot of, we need to be able to create this plan where we can adapt to the situation, right? Because if we can't, we're segregating land use, we're restricting density, and we need to be able to give freedom to those types of kind of restrictions, because everything is, 20 years from now, we may need something different there, right?
Yes.
So that's why we need to be very adaptive. And I want us to look at some of these, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at Houston, and Houston's the second biggest city in, in the United States of America, and they've been able to adjust based on the situation and be able to pass certain building types through, and it's been able to work for them. So my question is
I will second Commissioner Bearden's motion, whatever he's going to make.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a motion, but, but I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, I want us to be very innovative in our thinking when we're approaching this for the next 30 or 40 years, and be very adaptive to the situation, and not be boxed in, because, look, how many rezones have we done in the last 30 years? Because we didn't get it right the first time. So that's just my only opinion based on this, is I want us to be very innovative in our thinking as we approach this, and not necessarily look by doing things directly by the book. Does that make sense to box us in? That's all, that's just my input there.
I 100% agree with everything he just said.
For the record, Nicole Knapp, and we appreciate what you've just said, because planning documents are not meant to sit on a shelf for 30 years. And that's basically besides some Band-Aid amendments, as I like to call them over the last 30 years or more. That's what's happened to our code and comp plan. And that's why you're in a situation, we find ourselves in a situation, or most of what's driving the situations we're in now. We didn't evolve as the county evolved, probably in a position 30 years ago where they didn't necessarily want us to grow the same way we're envisioning our county today. You also have a different set of staff members today that are maybe a little bit more reasonably innovative, if you want to use that word, and we're eager innovative, if you want to use that word, and we're eager to look at all those tactics. I don't think you really want to be a Houston, even though you might say that, because I think, you know, rock crushing next to single-family homes is not complaints you want every day.
Yeah, we're living with that now.
So there needs to be a happy balance, and that's what I think we're very eager to do now. That's what we're looking for. Yeah.
Thing is, if the project makes sense, it makes sense in that area. That's, that's...
So we're trying to build in more incentive-based and flexibility than just the black and white is what we're trying to do.
Yes, sir.
Just speaking to philosophy on what Mrs. Knapp said, you know, I think you still have a board that may not, I mean, I'm born and raised here, may not like the growth that we're seeing, may not want it, but there's also a reality that has to be acknowledged. And I think that's the difference between previous boards and this board. I grew up in this. Lakewood Ranch High School came online when I was in high school, but, you know, it was, it was like the first new high school we built in who knows how long. And now it's like, we're building high schools every five to 10 years. So I kind of grew up in this and whether I like it or not, doesn't seem to really matter, unfortunately. So then the best thing to do is to plan the community accordingly based on what is actually happening rather than sort of being in denial about it.
Right. You still want smart growth, in staff's opinion, yeah?
Absolutely.
But I also think what Commissioner Bearden and Commissioner Knapp should say, and maybe I'm just, I'm not going to put words in their mouth, I think less is more in some case. I don't know if any community of our size needs 40 zoning, because you're not giving people the flexibility to change with the market. I mean, almost, I know we're Euclidean zoning and that's how we're going to stay, but almost put on a form-based code hat at times and give someone some level of flexibility. I mean, residential is compatible with residential. That's just what it is. I'd prefer us to be form-based code from top to bottom, but I know that's a much, much heavier carry. But the point is, the more flexible you make it, the more five years from now, if the market changes and something else happens, to Commissioner Bearden's point, they don't have to come in front of us and beg some arbitrary board for something that they should be able to do as a right because it's in the best interest of the community. We should have some level of flexibility and design and scope and utilization of land because that's how we're going to grow. To your point, that still allows you not to have rock crushing. That actually doesn't happen in Houston. That's an extreme case because the land next to residential is too valuable for somebody to put rock crushing on. It solves its own problem in Houston. I encourage everyone to go read Arbitrary Lines. It's a great book. But yeah, I agree. I think, I think part of this concept philosophically for this comprehensive plan and land development code should be more flexibility, more than the more restriction. I think it makes everything better.
And that's the feedback I think that we all needed to hear as part of today's healthy discussion to move forward with not only the comp plan, but as we're overlapping the LDC as well. So, thank you.
Real quick, what we've seen in the past is that items that should have been in the LDC have been put into the comp plan. I want to make sure that there's, not going forward, that's not going to happen. I mean, we have items that should, never needed a text amendment change that we have to go on through, that should have been part of an LDC, that should have been really simple to do. And now we have to go through these giant text amendments, got to transmit it, got to come back and forth. So I want, my comment is, I want to make sure that what belongs in the LDC stays in the LDC and what's in the comp plan is in the comp plan.
Very valid point, Commissioners, all of you. And I know Trevor and been taking notes, and we've got some other folks that are back home, I'll call it, listening as well. I'm going to start with that one and work my way backwards to you, Commissioner Cruz, because I want to give you some additional information that I think you might appreciate. The code is the code, the comp plan is the comp plan. When we went through and we redid the City of Venice's comprehensive plan, they had provisions in their comp plan that had regulatory components as far as building heights, number of parking spaces and other things. We asked a simple question. If somebody is going to modify the amount of parking that is required by the comprehensive plan, are you requiring them to do a text amendment? And the word came back was like, well, no, that's code. It's like, no, technically it's not. And the city attorney and it actually had changeover at that point, agreed and said, that's a code provision. And so when we did their comprehensive plan, we pulled every bit of that code component out and put it into the, into the plan, out of the comp plan into the code. Made things a whole lot simpler and easier. To kind of echo what you're talking about, Commissioner Cruz also is, and I'm going to kind of go off on a little bit of a tangent here, that's the reason what you're talking about is why the county engaged us a number of years ago to do the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Trevor's going to talk about that a little bit, was to think creatively for the county to be able to implement new types of parks and projects without being so boxed in. And one of the things, and I'm going to steal a little bit of Trevor's thunder here for a second, was the level of service within that portion of the comprehensive plan had provisions for X number of tennis courts or basketball courts. There were provisions back in the day that said every community or every neighborhood had to have a tot lot. Why? There was, there was actually a tot lot next to me in a retirement community. That I'd like to see personally, but we made it more flexible from a series of recommendations that instead of saying basketball courts or tennis courts, call them sports courts and have a broad-based definition. The other bad dad joke that I usually throw out there and I've gotten called on it a couple of times is, you know, 15 years ago, who had ever heard of pickleball? Now, officially, it actually gets started in 1965, which is interesting in and of its own. Another study that we did on behalf of the county is, the county said, hey, we want to take a look at what's going along the 41 corridor and some of our urban corridors from a zoning and land use perspective. We did a fairly detailed analysis that is here somewhere in this building, that we looked at every one of the planned development zone properties along those corridors and provided an analysis. Basically because there was a lot of, I'll say, specific types of items within those portions of the code versus being more Euclidean, which was, hey, by the way, if you're zoned this, as long as you're doing within this, you just keep going. When you start having those planned developments with specific types of conditions, and when I say there were specific conditions, we saw one that was like, it was a rezoning to, I think it was one of the PD commercial districts for like a 3,500 square foot accessory structure in a shopping center. To increase that, you'd have to technically modify that PD. And it became the Y. So we identified a number of properties, a number of strategies, and also a number of things within that study that said, hey, you know, the planned development is good, but it's not great. And you've got a lot of underutilized properties that are limited on what they can do because they are planned development. And in order to expand or to adapt to market conditions, to your point, Commissioner Cruz, they have to come back through a very, I'll say, detailed legislative process to make certain modifications. So there again, that's also one of the genesis components that, as we're looking through the future land use, that we're also taking into consideration that study that we did. I was the primary author on that, so I know exactly what we recommended and why. You go back to 2005 when I came here, Commissioner Van Austinbridge, I'm sorry, I wasn't born and raised here, but I love hearing from the folks that were. 2005, it was a different mindset and the body that's set in these chairs was two units an acre and we still want transit. And we want to extend water and sewer lines. And from a financial component, you can't make those work. So that's the reason we're trying to, like I said, there again, right-size the code, excuse me, the comprehensive plan, inform that so when you do do your code, you're going to be able to move forward fairly, fairly easily.
You ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
Conservation. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. I want to make sure we spend a little bit of time on transportation and since I've already kind of highlighted what Trevor's going to be talking about, I want to make sure we get to that. There again, you know, we did not undertake the provisions or the review of the wetlands policy. That was something that was already in process. That has been, of course, been finalized, so we will make sure that those policies and that direction by this board is carried over into that portion of the element. There's a number of things there again. Some of this is simple and easy and we're working with Kara and her team on this one to make sure that there's consistency across the comprehensive plan, the review agencies, the standards that are in play for that. Making sure there again, that the, that there are things that are more code-related, come out of the code and either go into, out of the comp plan and into the code or into a subsequent design manual. And then also a key component is also who's responsible for what, that implementation mechanism. This is one of those great things and talking with Kara, I love the passion that she brings to a lot of the things that we talk about. There's some consistency items that she's also identified from her staff moving forward. Coastal management, there again, this is going to be another one of those that we're going to continue to work through with staff. You have a number of overlays and areas between the coastal high hazard to the coastal evacuation, to the coastal planning, all of which say something a little different. And that is something that we've also seen working throughout the comprehensive plan and some of those studies we've done is some properties have two to three overlays either at the comprehensive plan level or at the code level, and they literally go in different directions. So what takes precedence at that point? So there's cleanup, there's clarification, there's simplicity that we can undertake, especially as it relates to the coastal high hazard areas. Of course, keeping into consideration that, one, there's one estate mandated definition that we're working with. Two, there's also other considerations, and I'll give you a great one. Live local starts to come into play with this as well, with some of those competing interests. But then also providing staff with a little bit more consistency and clarity on the use of these terms and the policy discussions and guidance. I'm going to stop there because there again, I worked through those two very quickly to see if there's any additional questions on those two before we go to transportation.
You have any questions on that?
Okay.
Let's press forward.
I'm going to turn it over to Adam Kerr. Adam?
Good morning. Adam Kerr with Kimley Horn Transportation Traffic Engineering. And in looking at the transportation element, there are four primary areas we're looking at to adjust or to clean up. One is, to your point, the discussion we just had and to your point earlier, was just a major cleanup of a lot of the language. What we see is a lot of the language is prescriptive. It should be in the code, should be in land development code, not in the comprehensive plan. So there's, there's a lot of cleanup like that in the transportation element. Another major area that we're looking at is repealing concurrency and removing all references to concurrency within the transportation element. We're looking at potentially at switching the level of service of the roadways or adjusting it to meet the FDOT's latest standards, which is called context classification. I'll go into these in more detail. And then also just providing overall mobility options for the different parts of the county. As I said, there's a lot of prescriptive language. For example, just in the thoroughfare map section of the transportation element, there, there's a lot of discussion about how those maps are made. That doesn't need to be in there. That can be in another document, whether it's a code or just a memo on how to make those. Removing all of that just makes the element a lot cleaner. As I said, we tie into the context classification, FDOT, I'll go into that in more detail, but improve multimodal transportation provisions. So this is, in addition to vehicles, this is bikes, pedestrians, transit, alternate travel modes. And this looks different in different parts of the county. So that, we'll talk about that in the context classification. For example, the provisions that are needed, you know, in the more urban areas of Bradenton would look different than the provisions that are needed on State Road 64 east of I-75. You know, what is a complete street or what transportation provisions are needed in addition to vehicles east of 64? Well, probably not as much focus on bicycles and sidewalks, not as many people walking along State Road 64, for example. But when you get further west, for example, you definitely, we would be looking at providing those provisions. And the future land use element, all this ties together, the transportation element, the future land use element. Everything that changes or is written in the future land use element obviously impacts transportation. So they're tied together very closely. There's a lot of coordination between those two elements. As I said, one of the considerations is to repeal concurrency. What this means is that we would remove the language of requiring concurrency from the transportation element. And likely, a possibility would be to implement the mobility fees to be used to help with the transportation needs, the transportation requirements. So I'm going to go a little into the context classification. FDOT has adopted this. This is, replaces their old system of adopted traffic capacity on roadways. Before it was, more or less, if it's a six-lane road, whether it's in downtown Bradenton or east of I-75, it was the same capacity, the road looked the same. And this creates challenges because, for example, if you're in an urban area and DOT would address it as a six-lane road, they would, for the most part, the standards were such that they were the same as a six-lane road in Lakewood Ranch. And that's not the case. So the context classification system has a broad range of different types of classifications, different contexts, for everything from a rural, a rural context all the way to an urban context. And what this means is that the capacities for those roads are different, the requirements for things like intersection spacing or driveway spacing, those are different. So you're not applying rural standards to urban areas and conversely, urban standards to rural areas. So this is an example of one of the classifications. This is a suburban residential classification. This would be typical of a Lakewood Ranch, State Road 70 Lakewood Ranch type area. And so in this, this example, the block spacing essentially, how often the intersections, major intersections are, is about a quarter of a mile. And obviously you have higher speeds, you actually have a higher capacity of roadway in this situation versus a similar section of roadway in terms of lanes in this urban classification. This would be Cortez Road, for example, where the block spacing is maybe more closer to around 500 feet or so. The speeds are lower and you also have more opportunity for pedestrian amenities, the bicycle amenities and, and other alternate forms of transportation. So it, in switching to the context classification, it affects essentially the capacities of the roads in our long-range planning. In most cases, it actually increases the capacity because instead of applying urban capacities to rural situations where you have more cars that actually can fit on the rural roads, for example, or the suburban roads, it actually, it makes it more precise, but also generally increases the available capacity on the roads. So if you have any comments or thoughts on transportation?
I have a quick question for you. Regarding FDOT's standards and capacity level of service, is FDOT more restrictive or less restrictive than what we currently have? We put a lot of subdivisions on new projects on two-lane roads that we consistently, because we always ask about level of service and capacity of that road. Where does their standards lie within that compared to our current standards of level of service and capacity?
So I actually looked at that and for the most part, I'd say 95% of the time, the, these new FDOT classifications actually allow more traffic. So a, their level of service would be the same, but instead of maybe 35,000 cars on the road as capacity available now, it's now up to 36 or 37. So it's actually less restrictive in terms of concurrency.
Okay, so where we have a D-level service, level of service on a road, is there's basically their level of service would remain the same, but they're going to allow more capacity on that same D service?
Exactly. We wouldn't be changing the level of service standard. If it was, if it was D before, if the allowable standard is D before, it would, it would remain D. It's just instead of maybe 35,000, it's 36,000.
So they'll allow more traffic on a bad road?
In some situations, yeah.
I mean, I mean, on a road that needs whatever. I mean, when we're putting a subdivision of 600 homes on a two-lane road, it's D-level, you know, it's D-level, that, that is some concern to us. We ask that question all the time. So I, that's why my question is, is where's FDOT lie with this? So apparently they're less restrictive on the same level of service road, they're less restrictive, which allows more capacity.
In most cases, that's, that's the situation.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on traffic? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. With that, I will turn it over to Trevor to speak about housing.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Trevor Poole. I'm a planner with Kimley Horn. I'll be going through... I'll be going through three elements fairly quickly. We'll start with element six, the housing element. Our first finding here was that we need to confirm certain policies are being implemented through the county's code. For example, 6126 and 6127, continuing to address the needs of the chronically homeless and encouraging the development of special needs housing, we need to make sure that these items are being done and understand how they're being tracked. Secondly, there are a lot of similar GOPs with the flu element. We need to either trim these down or decide where exactly they need to be going. There's no need to duplicate these policies. Thirdly here, we want to confirm or input language that allows for annual review to make sure that these items are being tracked and monitored specifically. And then, of course, a common theme coming up between a lot of these elements is some of these, what I like to call weasel words, which is continue or encourage certain items. We want to make sure that we're either taking them out and being less restrictive here or, you know, maintain that the county shall implement certain things. And then lastly here, just again, we want to provide metrics on how or when these items will be reported. Take, for example, policy 6126 and 6131, which describes continuing data collection to properly understand the housing needs of the continuing growing population. Move on to element seven here, historical and cultural.
Hold on.
Sorry. Commissioner Cruz.
From the housing standpoint, is that where we're going to be figuring out some of the affordable housing incentives, density bonuses, live local act, so forth? Is that the right time? I don't know all.
Yeah, that'll be mostly contained in the flu element, not the housing.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on housing? All right, sir, go ahead.
Very good. Element seven, historical and cultural. Main takeaway here, it reads very specific and almost like a land development code. Again, we want to make sure that LDC stays the LDC, comp plan stays the comp plan. Secondly, we want to make, again, specific responsibility statements. Instead of encourage or promote, we want to maintain that the county shall do certain things. Thirdly, again, how are certain items monitored? Take, for example, policy 7113, which reads, "Review all requests for additions, alterations, rehabilitation, and demolition of historic housing within historic neighborhoods." How are these items tracked and are they consistently being followed through? And then here, we want to consider including demolition by neglect language for historic properties. And lastly, we want to confirm some of these dates that are written in the comp plan here that either the items have been done or we need to update to continue with another study in the future or something of that sort. Take, for example, policy 7126 that reads, "By 2011, adopt historic preservation tax abatement program." Has this been done? Do we need to update the date? Do we need to do it again in the future? Lastly here, and as Kelly already touched on, some of the rec and open space element features, the biggest thing here is we want to confirm consistency with that 2021 Parks, Rec, and Open Space Master Plan. We want to maintain that the level of service standards written in that master plan comply with the comp plan that we're updating. Again, we want to have directive language. The county shall do certain things, not just encourage or promote if we want to specifically get them done throughout the comp plan. See, and then lastly, we want to update some of the dates. Take for policy, example, 8123, conduction of a need assessment study by 2008 to determine LOS meets rec needs of the county. So we want to update these studies. I will pass it back over to Kelly for the public facilities element.
Hey, Trevor, real quick. On, well, you're saying update these studies or that were like the 2008 or Parks or whatever. And your guys going through the plan, have you found that those have been consistently updated or are they kind of lagging behind that?
Yeah, they're mostly lagging. So we want to make sure that they're consistent with the pros master plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually an excellent question. Because unfortunately, what happens to a community's comprehensive plan is people focus in on future land use and transportation and they forget about everything else. And that's the reason when we go through and we're updating comprehensive plans, you will see in a lot of cases, it's like by 2008. And, because most people aren't reviewing that portion of the comprehensive plan. They may pull out one policy as it relates to the level of service, and they may do that on an annual or biannual basis. But, you know, technically, you could probably say that that pros master plan that we did in 2021 fulfilled that 2008 obligation because we did look at a number of things with respect to levels of service. So there again, it's something that, you know, it's in the comprehensive plan, so somebody could come back and go, well, did you do that? It's like, yes. Well, why didn't you update it? And it's not for a lack of effort by staff, to the contrary. You've got a phenomenal staff that's, and I'll just say this, overburdened, overworked, and they've got other priorities that they need to be able to address. In the ideal situation, you have somebody going through there and updating these items every year or being able to track some of this, but you don't have it. And most communities do not at this point. So that's where we start talking about some of that levels of service. As Adam talked about, you know, being consistent with DOT from a level of service perspective and getting away from concurrency is one item. We start looking at parks and recreation levels of service, being able to redefine how and what constitutes parklands and acreages and levels of service while still meeting the needs of the community. You know, this county has done, especially in the last couple of years, has done a remarkable job with upgrades to parks. I'm very proud of the fact that there is a brand-new park going right around the corner for me in Parrish. The county's released a number of parks and recreation area upgrades. You did an upgrade to GT Bray based off of certain things. Most of that was done in concert with that Parks master plan. It wasn't just informing the plan from a, you know, utilizing the funding that was coming through from the sales tax or some of the infrastructure components, but it actually laid out a great vision for the next 10, 20 years that the county is pursuing as we speak. And that kind of ties back to the public facilities because it's about, you know, we've talked about transportation, we've talked about parks. Now this is where a lot of our other folks are starting to work directly with utilities and solid waste and those groups to better understand, to make sure when we do turn on the water, that the water's coming out. When we flush the toilet, make sure we got capacity for that. Two basic principles that we need to make sure. Clean water and getting rid of it. But then how are we treating it? Where are we coming from a level of service capacity? And there's a number of studies that the county, of course, has to undertake through Southwest Florida Water and Management District and the state. Things like, you know, a water supply plan, looking at the population that we have here and making sure that there is enough capacity in the system for future as well. There's a lot of discussion, of course, that's ongoing on this, especially in light of 140,000 people coming over the next 20 years. So there again, making sure that either we are meeting the current levels of service on those items for water, wastewater, reclaimed, parks and rec, solid waste, those components that we really need to make sure we're addressing. But then also, if we're not, where is the breakpoint? At what point in the future, based off of these population projections? And there again, they're just projections, but being able to get out in front of it, that's the reason, you know, looking at what the utilities department is doing with some of their future studies coming up. When we were here the last time, there was a lot of discussion by Evan as far as some of that, the infrastructure components and master plans on that. How is that going to inform the comp plan or is it? Because that timeframe, it's actually kind of running parallel in some of those discussions. But there again, making sure that we're addressing at least the preliminary discussions from those other master plans. And then also looking at your solid waste master plan. There again, you've got, you know, what's going on from a solid waste disposal component? Where is it all going? What is the capacity of that? What is the lifespan? What are we thinking about in the next, you know, 10, 20 years and beyond that? So there again, those public facilities, and it's also getting into some of those intergovernmental coordination components with the city of Bradenton, with the Department of Transportation, with the city of Palmetto, with all these other agencies, because it truly is talking about public facilities, and it's not just limited to the county's facilities. It's how are you interacting with your other, also your partners as well throughout the county itself.
Commissioner Van Asher-Bridge had a question.
Yeah, I agree with just about everything he's saying there. And he's right. The board and staff have made a great effort to build parks, you know, ensure that we're keeping up with quality of life standards. So I was kind of disappointed that we put 15 million into GT Bray and you put a 15-year-old photo up that looks nothing like the park today. Property management's probably crawling out of their chairs and their desks right now. But yeah, we have done a great job on Bray specifically and out in Parrish as well. Too bad the picture doesn't reflect that.
We, I will tell you, for the next presentation, we will have Parrish and/or the GT Bray tip of all courts.
We're happy to provide you with a Flickr account where you can source all of those photos.
Point taken, Commissioner. Very much point taken. Actually, we probably should have used the one that I just took when I was out at Robinson Preserve two weeks ago with my wife, which, by the way, it's another one of those facilities that is second to none. And you look at that rubberized walking trail that is out there, the crossings over, you know, the habitats, the interaction that is with the, you know, the natural environment and the wildlife and the habitats. I've got some great photos of that, so I need to get those to you, Trevor, sorry. But again, little things like that and those types of parks facilities also cross over to the conservation components and also into some of the coastal elements. So that's where we're saying, you know, there are a lot of ties in between elements. One, making sure that they're being followed and addressed, but also being identified within the respective element.
Nice recovery.
So there again, we're kind of wrapping up here in the next little bit, but we want to make sure that we have enough time from either a specific topic, specific thought and idea, or just comments in general as far as what are we doing from the comprehensive plan perspective? What are you seeing and hearing? What do you want to make sure that we are taking into consideration as a governing body, providing that leadership for the community through the comprehensive plan process? And even if it's things like the land development code, Commissioner Cruz, is identifying those because if there's a specific code component that we're going to be looking at in the near future, it needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So there is that kind of back check into those items. The other thing I will say is, of course, we can dive into some of the community workshops that are going to be coming up towards the end of the summer. But more importantly, I wanted to make sure to provide an opportunity for the board to provide us thoughts, comments, suggestions. Or as my professor in my grad school used to say, does anyone have any questions, comments, perplexities, anomalies, or other general paranoia? That was always a great segue before we had our final exams.
I do have one question. We're talking about policy updates and things like that. Would it be your recommendation to staff, once you get through this whole process, that we have a person within developmental services that is that type of champion to make sure that we're staying on top of these? Because like Trevor said, what I mean, when we looked at, what, 2008, that was the last time I really kind of got into it on the parks and things like that. So is that something, part of your, being able to keep the comprehensive plan moving forward as a fluid as it is? Because that's what we want it to be. We want it to be fluid, we want it to be organic, we want it to be moving. Should there be someone as the, you know, I mean, our staff is slammed all the time. But there should be someone specific that is the comprehensive plan type person or that continues to look at changes within the comp plan? Because then we have the, you know, outside of that, we have the LDC we have to worry about also. So, I mean, there's a lot of work. There's a lot of work that goes on in developmental services. And we don't want the same things to happen that, you know, we're sitting here 30 years later and they've just been shoving stuff into the comp plan, you know, to do whatever they wanted to do. We want to make sure that that is continuing and moving forward as a comprehensive plan.
Great suggestion. You know, that champion is critical. When you start having too many champions is when the process starts to dissolve. Because, you know, one place we talked to, they actually had a champion per element. Staff changes, what happens? That position doesn't ever get backfilled. So if you've got one person or even two people that can shepherd this and, you know, they're providing you with regular updates twice a year or whatever else, how are we doing from a report card from an implementation component? What's coming up from the key elements of the comprehensive plan? You do that twice a year and as a formal report as part of a work session. That's something that we would definitely advocate for, not trying to put any more work on to Rachel and Charles, but it becomes, it becomes an accountability component of this as well.
Yeah. I mean, you know, Trevor was talking about, you know, we're supposed to be monitoring in historical neighborhoods, demolition houses, remodeling of houses and things like that. I don't ever think we've ever seen a report or in any type of situation that's discussed that type of process that's going on. And that's important that we, you know, we maintain our historical neighborhoods and, you know, like Woodfield and places like that have historical homes in those. So I mean, I'm just putting it as an example that that just kind of just, because we're so busy doing other things, we're so busy at a 35,000 level and not a 3,500 level, those kind of things slip through the crack. And it's important, you know, to how we move as a county and to the citizens also. So that's why I support, you know.
And I'm actually, I'm going to build off of something that you just mentioned, Commissioner, which is from the historic properties. You know, that is not a static, okay, if it was built before 1955, it's automatically historic. There are guidelines, and every year that we move forward, there's other properties that start to become eligible under either the state or the federal requirements. There again, this is, does not become a thou shall, but it becomes, that becomes part of that annual monitoring, what's going on with some of these other structures that may be on the fringe of being available for historic designation, which gets into tax credits and other things like that.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Cruz?
I know we talked earlier about these subsequent steps and they're overlapping, but not the exact same. Some of these, though, you know, where do we stand? Are we going to have some preliminary, at least, thoughts before we finalize? Like, for instance, like the corridor study. I think that's critically, critically important. I mean, especially when it comes to housing and density and zoning rights and so forth, because that's going to steer where things can go. Because right now, we just, again, we keep building the same stuff in the same places further and further away. Once we build that land, we never get it back. And the same thing with the corridor. You never get it back. And then you see City of Bradenton doing fun, creative things like clustered homes, and you see River View Six that took the time to diligently parcel, you know, put together and accumulate six different parcels of land and build a very nice project, walking distance. We don't really have that ability, nor do we give people the incentive for it along Ninth and Fourteenth and these, you know, Cortez, these main corridors that should be doing that, and we're wasting time. So my two questions are, one, are we going to have a preliminary, at least, macro level view of, here's some thoughts as we're finalizing this? Number one. Number two is, some of these things that seem like lower hanging fruit, like some of these main corridors, especially the ones that just are continuations of City of Bradenton, like where City of Bradenton stops going down Ninth and then it just, it's all like old tire shops and bodegas and everything else as far as I could see. Is there any kind of stopgap Band-Aid that can even be contemplated? Maybe not. Maybe it's just too much work to bother with. Where we can start allowing some of these more obvious corridors to allow for this level of development? Because City of Bradenton just put their overlay in with the T5s and T6 or T4 and T5, T5, T6. Why aren't we just doing stopgaps on some of these things now to help steer some of this, to allow for that development? Because I'd much rather, see, and you're not going to get those done with our current zoning. You can't build on any of these corridors with R16 Max and up to R40 if you jump through 15 different hoops and it's the exact right parcel and the sun's in the right stage. Like, you're not going to, you're not going to get the density you need to encourage. Because what we hear is these homes that keep getting built further, further away. And half the people say they don't want any housing whatsoever because they want rents to double. But, you know, you keep getting houses first, but why aren't we? Look at Sarasota. Granted, it's a city and not county, but they have, they have their urban, they have their urban fringe, they got their downtown core, they got these great little things. And they allow, you know, massive density in some of these places. But I'd much rather put 50 or 100 units on an acre or two than have to use 40 or 50 acres for the same number of housing someplace else. And we're going to lose that acreage going further east and further north if we don't start doing this now. Because one year doesn't seem like a lot, but one Because one year doesn't seem like a lot, but one year is meaningful because we've wasted 30 years. So is there, those are my kind of two questions. I know it was a long winded, but one, are we going to get a preliminary idea before we get there? And two, is there any thoughts from Kim Lee Horn or from staff to allow for some sort of a Band-Aid fix on some of these that are going to take another 12, 24, 36 months that we can start enacting them today?
So I'm going to give you the easy one first, which is the preliminary recommendations that kind of roll out absolutely. Because before we can do our public rollout of the guidance, we've got to be sitting here with you all going, this is what we're recommending, why? And go through almost like another very much detailed, a series of recommendations to a workshop. So to answer that question, absolutely. This thing's got to be vetted by this body before we go out to the public, before we get into that formal process with the planning commission and then the transmittals. With respect to those, some of those stopgaps, I'm definitely going to defer to Rachel at this point as far as some of those corridor components. But as there are studies that are coming online, that even if it's preliminary series of recommendations that we can go ahead and bridge and put into the comp plan now, we absolutely want to do that. It's those items, I will say, once we get ready to hit to the planning commission, that's where we're going to have to stop, quote unquote, those stopgaps. And, you know, our office is downtown Sarasota. We've been working with the City of Sarasota on a number of initiatives, you know, 40, 60 dwelling units per acre with some of the incentivization and, you know, some of the heights and the other things like that. Can it be done? Yes. Are there willing developers out there to do it? Yes. Is it done in a context sensitive manner in the corridors that need it? Yes. That's, that's my soapbox. Rachel?
Mr. Chair?
My only question is, is like, so if we're looking at elevating density, right? What would be a height restriction here in downtown Bradenton that we could max? I mean, what's the highest we could go?
21.
What's that?
Bradenton goes to 21 stories.
Yeah.
Does it go higher than that? Is that, is that a special zoning for that? I mean.
Yeah, T6.
T6, okay.
Rachel's dying.
She's dying. Go ahead.
Before she jumps in, anything above 200 feet, then you start getting into the FAA requirements can be done. But there is a separate process that comes into play. And of course, we have to make sure we're being consistent with the master plans and the flight tracks for SRQ because of the federal standards that they have. There's also a state statute, Florida statute 333, which gets into some of their slopes and things like that. So yes, we can go higher. Two, we just got to be careful where we're doing it because of the context of the airport.
Yeah, anything we do is going to be contention upon federal and state regulations. I mean, that's outside the scope of our approval process.
Rachel's dying answer.
I know, I have so much. I can't even share it all. Okay. So again, Rachel Layton for staff, for the record. Commissioner Bearden, Commissioner Cruz, Form Based Code in City of Bradenton was adopted in 2011. So we are seeing a lot of the wonderful results of it now as we see the 920 building coming up out of the ground. That will be 12 stories. That will be one of our tallest buildings that we've allowed for construction in a very long time in the city or in the county. Their Form Based Code does allow up to 20 stories. I think that's the maximum in their most intense category. And we can certainly work towards something that mirrors those categories that the City of Bradenton has where they allow for certain intensities and densities and heights with different incentives, whether it's public art, which is in theirs, or workforce housing, affordable housing, or buildings lead certification so that we're having a more efficient building type. That's how the City of Bradenton's comprehensive plan and Form Based Code work together. And I think that we would want to make sure that we're encouraging along those same lines. And that was really the heart of one of, two of the questions I had for the commission today was what densities and where and what heights? Because that's one of the things that the 1989 comprehensive plan really restricted was how much density we were allowed to have as a community, which is why we see the development patterns that we have today. And height was really not encouraged at all. Even getting something over two stories was very difficult for a very, very long time in Manatee County. So I would love for us to be able to look at those, especially those corridors along US 41, along State Road 64 where we're going to see new growth, to be able to have taller buildings where it's appropriate and where we can transition them out to the existing neighborhoods so that we have compatibility. So I have a tall order, but I just wanted to make sure that I, that I'm hearing what the commission is hearing too, or hearing your needs and your desires for the policy changes to shift that mindset from the low density, shorter building height to something that where appropriate, we can encourage height and density.
Commissioner Van Oosterbridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And maybe this is more of a dialogue with Commissioner Turner, but we can, if we were to make these types of changes, ideally, it makes more sense to not continue to sprawl out east, right? None of us wants to see the continued sprawl out east. It's literally something everyone can agree on. So what makes sense then is to have more density downtown and to go up. And the City of Bradenton has started to incentivize that. So then the question is, beyond the city limits, do we incentivize it near the urban core? But there's a reality to it and that's that the majority of the people that are moving down here, Ray, are boomers who like, they're accustomed to the suburbs. They're accustomed to a yard. Right? And that's, that's where the demand is. We're not in the business of building houses, but at the same time, I guess, you know, how much social engineering are we willing to do? It's just, I guess, we're a philosophical sort of discussion I just want to have. And how does that go? Yeah.
I mean, the urban, I think it's almost what St. Petersburg did too, right? They encouraged the more height density and actually encouraged a different demographic to come to the area, which is what we want too, is that mix. So I think this will really help with giving us a little bit more of a diverse demographic that wants to come here. If St. Petersburg can do it, so could we, right? So I think, I don't think we're going to be able to stop urban sprawl because we're known for that. Lakewood Ranch is well advertised as a top selling community. And as we move out, that's what people are going to want. But the young folks would be nice. They like the more urban feel.
Yeah, and the St. Pete model is the mayor and the council's model in general. They're not really after Sarasota as much as they are the St. Pete model.
But if we can do that, if we can, if we can get higher density without responding to people not wanting change, it will help with the urban sprawl. It has to, right? More workforce housing, something a bit more affordable, more density. And to George Cruz's point, mixed use. We're going to have to do it.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I don't think anyone's ever saying we're going to stop building houses out east and north because people want that. I mean, it just is what it is. But people, people want something until it's not in their best interest to want it any longer. And if you've put enough density downtown and you start getting grocery stores and restaurants and nightlife and work centers, and it starts becoming cheaper to live downtown because of the sheer supply in a downtown and along our corridors, people want a backyard until it's much more affordable to have a neighbor on the other side of your wall. And then you, people will start going that way. And to your point, you start getting different demographics. People, younger people typically are okay with smaller, smaller units. They're okay with downtown, more urban style lifestyles. You get enough young people, we have, what, five universities around here? They all moved to Atlanta or Orlando and every place else the minute they graduate. That's why EDC has a hard time getting, you know, these, some of these higher wage jobs in here. You start providing people places to live where they want to live and then all of a sudden you have a skilled workforce and then you start getting higher wages and it starts correcting itself. So you're never going to stop the housing because people want that. We need to provide whatever people want within the confines of our comp plan. But things will start becoming cheaper. You'll start seeing less supply of houses out east because more developers are going to start steering more towards where our incentives are, which is going to make those houses more expensive and encourage more people to want to be more towards the urban center, which is better for our infrastructure, it's better for employment basis, it's better for paving over less land. It works itself out. We're not trying to necessarily social engineer, we're just trying to provide what people want and people don't know they want it because we don't provide it. So, you know, I think.
They know they want it, they're just going somewhere else.
They go to St. Pete. They go to St. Pete. They go to downtown Tampa, which went from a roll up the sidewalks at 5:00 PM to a vibrant 18-hour city now because they started doing stuff with Water Street. So, you know, you know, this is a work session, but maybe a Band-Aid is just to say, hey, let's come up with some sort of overlay that effectively mirrors City of Bradenton's downtown T5, you know, down Ninth and Fourteenth and some of these corridors as a stopgap. Because at least we can start getting the ball rolling, developers can start looking at opportunities, we can start, and it's just a basic overlay, it doesn't require a whole lot. We, I mean, City of Bradenton is doing a great job. I mean, since, since Mayor Brown came in, I mean, he's, he's really put a concerted effort to making downtown more vibrant. It takes time, but, you know, with City Hall and some of these overlays, he's doing an excellent job and I appreciate it. And I, I would, I wish our code was more along the lines of theirs. So even simple overlays on a couple of corridors to give people the option, I think is a somewhat easy Band-Aid solution.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, if I can echo something, because I, and this is again, something that we see and I think it's going to kind of definitely hit home with you, with this board, we have a tough time recruiting in our firm. Cost of living, lack of resources, lack of nightlife. Not everybody can afford to be downtown Sarasota. Not everybody can, wants to be out in Lakewood Ranch. I know that's not. It's a little blasphemous, so apologies right now. But, you know, I've got, we actually have, and I've got a gentleman who's going to be relocating from another one of our offices to start working in Sarasota, but he's going to be physically living in St. Pete. Why? Rents and activity. Goes to your point, Commissioner Cruz.
That's a great point. They redeveloped their, it's attractive. I mean, I'm 60, I'm old. Like, you know, I go up there for a night out because Sarasota even, it closes early, right? If you're, if you're in UTC area, same thing, nine o'clock. I'm on a date night, I want to at least go to midnight. It's my night out.
Date night.
Everything's shut down at nine. So, I mean, that kind of urban and then the vertical actually looks attractive. Let's look at downtown St. Pete, how it's transformed and that matter of Sarasota, if we look at old pictures where people are trying to hang on to it and they're going, you know, if we look at this evidence, I'm going, it's, it looks a little more attractive. That's, that's an attractive style.
Well, I will tell you, being born and raised in Sarasota, it took a long time for them to get there. I mean, it's been a long time coming. And you can see it happening in downtown Bradenton. They're getting there. The city council's being somewhat aggressive on their growth plan downtown. I would, you know, I echo everybody's thoughts that we need to have more vertical density in the urban core. There's just no doubt about that. We're somewhat restricted because of SRQ and their overlay to where we can actually do this. But we definitely, you know, sitting on the EDC, to echo Commissioner Cruz's comment, they'll tell you all the time, we cannot get, you know, high wage employees down here and companies down here because we just don't have anywhere to put them. And that is creating a problem as we try to grow bigger as a county, not just in development, but as a economic development for Manatee County and move Manatee County forward. But yeah, I would like to see, I agree with everybody, I'm with everybody, I'd like to see more urban density and overlay like Commissioner Cruz suggested to where we can look at that type of stuff that where they aren't going to be way out, but closer to downtown, to where we can have that vibrant community downtown and attract those, you know, those, those younger, younger than me, you know, crowd. But.
Rachel, does that answer your question, because you were asking a specific question? So height was one of them, right?
Yes, height was one of them. And we can mirror what City of Bradenton is doing with theirs as they transition away from the core to allow for those heights to, to be increased from where we are today. And the density question also, that helps tremendously. We'll have staff take a look at our urban corridor section in the land development code to see if there's a way we can mimic some of the, what's in the City of Bradenton's code so that we can bring that forward sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wants canyons like you see in other places, but I mean, I think they want something that's mixed use, mixed height and that, you know, is, brings that back to the core.
Correct. And the market will level itself out, but maybe that's what we're missing in the ability to redevelop along the 14th Street corridor. Because we're seeing lots of buildings come down, but nothing, not much, not enough new come up. But we do have some nice new buildings coming.
So we're, we're at 10 minutes over our normal break in any meeting, but Kelly, are you ready to wrap it up or?
Like I said, this is your meeting with, we're at the point where we're just receiving feedback and comments and thoughts. So.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Kelly Turner.
Takes us in comment on the complaint we write?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to go that next because I'd like to get a break here then if, then if we could pick, if we get done, get a break, assist a comment, get a break and then try to pick up maybe on public safety and get that moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank everybody, colleagues for the discussion because I think we all sort of knew where we stood on this and we were all in agreement. But I, I think the public just needed to see a little bit of sausage making, right? And sort of like in math class, like show your work and kind of explain to them how we got here and where we're, where we're going with it, just a little more detail.
I think this has been one of the most productive work sessions we've had in terms of giving real direction. I think you all see exactly where this board is. I think this board is all lockstep in the same direction because we all hear from the same people. And, you know, I think this has been very productive, so I appreciated the work session and having it set up.
Same challenges. Like you identify the challenges as county-wide, it's not district specifically.
Yes, sir.
You know, I know doing a comp plan review is a heavy lift and it's not an easy lift. And we saw that when Sarasota went through theirs. And I appreciate all the hard work that one staff has done, Courtney and her team have done an unbelievable job, meeting with utilities, public works, Parks and Rec, trying to put all, you know, trying to spend all those plates at the same time to come up with a viable plan and viable comp plan that we can move forward with. But thank you, Kelly, for you guys doing all the hard work you guys do too and your team. And I appreciate that. What I was just told though, is that there is no public safety. Oh, it's, oh, it's at 1:30. Okay. All right. All right. So what we'll do is, Kelly, you done?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. What we'd like to do now is to open up for any public comment with regards to what's been talked about today and the comprehensive plan review. If there's anyone in the public that'd like to come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. What we'll do now is, I think we should adjourn and then, and then be back here at 1:30. All right, thank you. We're going to be adjourned till 1:30. Thank you.
Bicycle and pedestrian crashes along this corridor are two times higher than the statewide average. Forty-six percent of the total severe crashes, which are crashes that involve serious human, human bodily injury or fatalities, forty-six percent, forty-six percent of those involved a pedestrian or bicyclist during this period. Additionally, forty-nine percent of the total crashes occurred at intersections. We are seeing a concerning trend of severe crashes along this corridor going up since 2019, and in 2023, there were four serious injuries in which, or serious crashes in which one included a fatality. We are performing a safety analysis to identify the existing safety issues and potential solutions to eliminate those severe crashes. A safety workshop with key stakeholders, including law enforcement and first responders, is tentatively scheduled for late summer to gain their insights on what's going on on that corridor. So this PDNE study is building on previous completed studies, plans, and initiatives shown here on this slide. These studies and plans will help inform our approach on the complete streets corridor that meets the needs and vision of Anna Maria Island. This project is being developed through engaging with the Anna Maria, Anna Maria Island community to gain input, again, on known issues and potential opportunities that could better inform our technical approach. With the mixture of land uses and the high density of multimodal users, this corridor is in need of safer facilities for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. So we are developing multimodal alternatives to provide that full connectivity along both sides of the roadway. Another project goal is to reduce flooding along the corridor. A drainage analysis is part of our study, and we will be engaging with the cities of Bradenton Beach and Holmes Beach for their insights on drainage issues along this roadway. So our study began in January of this year, and we are, again, developing those concepts and alternatives. A safety workshop, again, is tentatively scheduled for late summer. The Alternatives Public Workshop is anticipated to occur in early 2025, where we would present those initial alternatives for public input and feedback. Those alternatives would then be refined and evaluated for impacts to environmental resources along the corridor, and if required, a public hearing would occur in early 2025, where we would present the preferred alternative, and public involvement and stakeholder engagement is, will occur throughout the study. And it's anticipated to be complete in early 2026. So our safety moment today is just a reminder, as we approach summer, the period between Memorial Day and Labor Day is considered the 100 deadliest days for teen drivers. Parents can help ensure a safer ride for their teen about, by talking to them about safety when driving, including limiting the number of passengers in the vehicle, eliminating distractions like cell phones, obeying posted speed limits, remaining attentive, restricting nighttime driving, and of course, buckling up. So after today, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me or the FDOT project manager, Adam Rose, who unfortunately is out sick today. You can also check out the website on the FDOT page, and there's a QR code available to access that. And thanks for allowing us the opportunity to present this project, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? Yes, Representative?
If I may, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I hear a lot from constituents, as I'm sure these representatives do as well, about bike paths and pedestrian safety along the Barrier Islands. I did notice in the map that you showed, some of the projects that you are studying in this PDNE were on this MPO's project prioritization list from 2023, but were red, which I'm assuming means you're not funding them. Does that mean that DOT plans to pull those projects, you know, like out of the stack of this MPO and fund them?
Are you talking about, oh, can you show the slides, please? I just want to make sure we, I'm understanding. Are you talking about this map here? This is the Sun Trail segment. So what this means is, these, the red are the proposed, or, you know, unfunded portions of the Sun Trail network, and the green is what is existing.
I'm sorry, no, it was, it was back. When you, when you showed the full scope, yes. I mean, maybe I'm mismatching lists of priorities, but...
Yeah, no, I didn't go over any other projects that we are...
You didn't name any roads, but I know them based on the colors.
Okay.
Well, I think the question is, what's the funding source?
Sure, yeah, and the idea, yeah.
And are they being elevated, right? So like, if this board is not, if they're red on this board and they have a low score...
Correct.
Are they getting, are they jumping the line? Because...
They can potentially, like, you know, okay, can answer this too. Any, any, any project that's on that list, you know, depending on if this is raising to the level of this being a priority, and they're doing a PDNE and evaluation, yes, the idea is that they will be evaluated within this existing corridor and then applied moving forward. So if the recommendations that they make, right, this is mainly related to complete streets efforts, so not capacity or anything like that. Yeah, so, so we're not looking at that from that capacity. We're, this is mainly evaluating bike pad facilities, comfort, moving in and off the island. So anything that's related to that, that we could then help fund, I mean, this is an MPO-funded PDNE, where this is using our discretionary funds, even though it is on a state facility, to fund this PDNE, that will continue to be elevated and evaluated. So if the recommendation's out of this, if they're consistent with our plans, then they can certainly be funded and move forward.
I would add that, I understand your question now, sorry. Okay, so I would add that we will be coordinating with, you know, MCAT. The, the goal of the project is, again, not for capacity or necessarily congestion, but we understand the congestion, and the goal is to make folks feel comfortable riding and biking along this island. I visit it once a year for a week with my friends and family, so I know it well, and, you know, get them, the transit is free, there's the monkey bus, so if we can get people walking and biking using transit and reduce those on-island vehicle trips, and then taking the ferry and making it comfortable for them, once they get onto the island to ride and walk, you know, hopefully we can make an effort in reducing congestion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd like to respond to Representative's question. So a few years ago, we've done the Barrier Island Traffic Study, right? You know, so there's several recommendations that came out of it, which translated into the list of priority projects that the MPO adopted. And this PDNE study is the first step of making the complete streets improvements, which came out of the recommendation of the Barrier Island Traffic Study. Because if you look at the department's process for any project implementation, the project development planning is a first step, which is, a traffic study did that, and then project development is a next step, which lays the foundation for what type of engineering solution comes out, which goes into design. So that would be the next step. So this is kind of like the first step to making the MPO priority a reality. It's gonna take a few years to get there, but, you know, project development is the first step, so.
Okay, sorry, so, so, I'm gonna answer my own question. So what this PDNE, the recommended projects that come out of this PDNE will be added to the MPO list, and you'll rack and stack them and score them, and then you all will vote whether to fund them or not?
Yes, and cooperate with DOT and balancing within the regional priorities. We never have enough money to fund everything. So out of the Barrier Island Traffic Study, there were something like 60-some-odd recommendations, you know, the most extreme of which was, well, we can have a car, an island with no cars on it, and that's not going anywhere, any, in our lifetimes, but we, this, this did move forward, and so the study is now underway, and will tie in with Anna Maria's high island visioning effort that they're doing locally without using the federal funds. And this, this, we would hope would be eligible for both state funding and future federal And if it comes up with, let's say, 10 major significant cost items, then we may have, you have to start somewhere. And this is the, this is the challenge and the balance in our, our next long-range plan. You know, we're actually, our revenue projections are reduced from the 2045 plan, so our cost feasible plan, or what we anticipate actually being able to do, might be a shorter list. That does not mean we'll have a shorter list of needs, but it means that as, as either new funding sources come in, or opportunities to, for partnerships happen, then we will be looking to leverage those.
So basically, you're saying, if the state would give us more money...
We'll, we'll take all the bridges we can get, and bridges are really important down here.
And again, we, I think the majority of us in this room know what's happening in our state and why, and we agree with it. But sometimes then it does flow down, some of these projects take longer because they're not able to be funded, and locally, they can't fund them.
And good afternoon, we're back to the second half of our workshop today, and the second half is gonna be about transitioning from a hospital-based to a community-based care model. And today we have Deputy Director Jimmy Crutchfield presenting on behalf of public safety. So go ahead, sir, we're ready for you.
So I can just give a quick intro? Do you want me to first, Jimmy? Okay, so Courtney DePaul, Deputy County Administrator, and so this came up because recently, as the public's been made aware as well, and we briefed the commissioners, we no longer have an indigent care contract with Manatee Memorial. So we wanted to really look holistically at our basis of care and our care model for the indigent population, which is the uninsured and underinsured population. And so with that, we've got Jimmy Crutchfield here to present, along with Jeff Cordes. And so with that, I'll kick it off, so Jimmy, take it from there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. County Administrator, James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety. Today, I'm here to talk to you all about transitioning our health services from a more of an emergency care dialogue into a community-based model for the community. Okay, so over the years, Manti County government has funded multiple programs and services through numerous mechanisms in an effort to assist the uninsured. With that being said, we have to keep in mind that the healthcare landscape continues to evolve, and we need to ensure that the residents are receiving their basic needs. One of the most significant challenges that we have to face is access to care and accessing medical resources. It's vital for these individuals to have access to essential healthcare resources and medical resources for multiple reasons, but mostly due to the generational impact of the individuals that we serve, both the families and the communities. The individuals who do not have access to primary and preventative care and who are unable to appropriately manage chronic conditions are more likely to access more costly acute care resources, placing an additional burden on the system of care here in Manatee County and the overall county spending. This has a multi-generational impact. We're essentially teaching families, children, on how to inappropriately access healthcare resources. So as such, we propose creating a true community-based system that prioritize primary care and preventative care services to decrease the overreliance on the more costly emergency medical services, ED, programs here in the community. So before getting too far into the weeds, it's been brought to my attention that a lot of individuals here are unaware of the healthcare services team here in public safety. So I wanted to highlight in a brief overview of the team and who oversees the county's indigent contracts and provides the safety net programs for the uninsured in the community. Starting at the left is Jeff Cordes, the Health Information Services Manager, who you'll be hearing from briefly. Reporting directly to me, Jeff coordinates and manages the healthcare team and oversees the daily operations. The healthcare services team runs very lean compared to other counties throughout the state. Still, they do a fantastic job ensuring the care for those who are uninsured are met, coordinating high-quality medical, behavioral, and access to services throughout, throughout the community. Okay, starting from the left is Senior Health Services Analyst Patricia Blizzard. This is a grant-funded position. She ensures access to life-saving naloxone overdose education and provides community-based training initiatives. To the right is Opioid Response Policy Coordinator, his name is Andrew. This position is litigation-funded through the opioid litigation. He oversees all things opioid-related, and I look forward to formally introducing you all to him at a later date. all to him at a later date. The board recently approved a grant writer position last year. Her name is Lauren Franklin. In last year, in the first year of her employment, she was able to secure a four-year federal grant for the county, and that was $1.3 million. To the right of her is Health Services Program Manager Tuli. She oversees all the nonprofit funding agreements and supervises the health data scientists and the health analyst. And we have one vacancy in the team right now, and that's the Community Health Educator, which is also grant-funded. It's important to note that out of all these positions, there's only five of the positions that are general fund-dependent. The rest are funded through litigation monies or grant dollars. There's a lot of information on this slide, and if you would allow me to walk you through and give you a brief overview of the healthcare system here in Manti County, going back to 1953, where the county, where the county built its first county-owned hospital, Manti Veterans Hospital. It was established for the heart of the community and a pillar of hope for many of the returning war veterans. However, in the early eighties, the county began to develop plans to sell the hospital, and then in 1984, Manti County finalized the agreement for selling the hospital. The sale of the hospital created a corpus, and it created a $45 million fund that was committed to providing future indigent care in the community. If we were to fast-forward about ten years, the hospital was sold again to Health Services, which continues to operate the hospital today. We're talking about Manatee Memorial. In 2008, the hospital placed a physician-indigent care program, was created by the board, and was created to assist facility costs and services and fees. It also provided independent payments for physicians who were contracted through the hospital itself. Skipping ahead a few more years, in 2013, Manatee County created a healthcare plan, which is also known as the Indigent Health Plan, that we currently utilize today. One of the major goals of that plan was to transition from a hospital and physician-based program into a community-based program, which we're talking about currently now. In 2014, that plan was redesigned again in an attempt to ensure the most appropriate and cost-effective care was available and delivered to the community. Skipping ahead one more year, in 2015, the corpus from the original cell in 1984 was depleted, and the Board of County Commissioners approved the Healthcare Advisory Board to provide recommendations regarding future indigent programs, along with approving a transitional program which expanded the original scope of the corpus. The board further directed that the study be conducted on the local system of care, and that study was completed in 2016 by Health Management Associates and included specific programmatic and service recommendations that predominantly spoke to education and directing individuals to less acute care, again, ensuring that the preventative and primary care services were prioritized over costly acute care options. All three hospitals that participated in the program between 2018 and 2021, that's Blake, Lakewood Ranch, I'm sorry, all three of the acute care hospitals participated in the program between 2018 and 2021, Blake, Lakewood Ranch, and Manatee. However, they did not re-enroll after 2018 due to cost of the Health Information Exchange. Finally, if we were to jump to 2022, the original Healthcare Advisory Board sunset in Manti Memorial's last agreement for indigent healthcare expired with the county, and at this point in 2022, there were no hospitals providing services outlined in the original hospital agreement back in 2008. It's a lot. As previously mentioned, this board approves numerous programs and services to ensure the county and the county's residents have access to healthcare and healthcare-related services. This includes nonprofit agreements, as well as indigent care funding agreements based out of the hospitals themselves. Last year, the Health Services Team managed sixteen of those nonprofit agreements and resulted over 9,000 different invoices for services. The funding itself also includes low-income pool funding, or LIP, which augments the state funding and federal government funding to provide additional money for uncompensated care within the community. Partners with different nonprofit agencies to access to pharmaceuticals at low or discuss the overall indigent care program today. It's known as Good County or the Indigent Care Plan itself. There's a lot of different names, and it gets bounced around multiple times in the community. The board also supports the Health Department and augments a portion of their state budget through local funding agreements, and the county has a federally qualified health center, FQHC, that's MCR, that provides affordable care to the underserved and uninsured through a sliding fee schedule structure. Collectively, all of these encompass the county's system of care and provides and ensures that indigent residents have access to healthcare services. With that being said, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Jeff, our Health Information Services Manager, who will provide additional overview of the care provided through the Manti County's Indigent Care Plan, along with some recommendations to the board to consider regarding the future of healthcare services here in the county. Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff Cordes, Health Information Services Manager with the Public Safety Department. So, while Deputy Director Crutchfield talked about multiple different indigent programs here in the county, I think it's important to understand that the basic eligibility criteria for these individuals is relatively the same across the board. What we're going to see is an income of at or below 200% of the federal poverty level. So for a single individual, that puts us just above $30,000 to be eligible for these different programs. Obviously, it also requires Manatee County residencies, and the individuals has to be, individual has to be uninsured as well. So, indigent care programs specifically, we see that the race breakdown of participant relatively aligns with our current census tract here in Manatee County. Looking to your right with the age chart, you'll see that the age range slightly increases with the forty-to-sixty-year-old cohorts utilizing this service a little bit more than those other age ranges. And in the top right, we provided a heat map, so while you can see the current participants with their homes of record, dispersion is across the county, but we do see additional utilization in the urban core, and specifically, the densest utilization is going to be in your 34205 zip code. So one thing I think it's important to note is that this program is fiscally conservative. We're what's called a payer of last resort. So what that means is that we will exercise state, federal, and third-party insurances before we'll utilize any county dollars to pay for these indigent programs. Individuals who must be enrolled in the programs prior to participating in the program, and they're eligible for approximately six months afterwards, at which time these individuals must re-enroll and provide additional documentation such as proof of income. So looking at this chart on the left is the highest billing provider agencies participating services through this program. And again, I think it's important to note that on the right-hand side is the highest reimbursement providers. So while we're billed approximately $5.3 billion in last fiscal year, this board only paid out $1.25 million for this care for these indigent residents. Yes?
Just, this is more a curiosity, how do you, like, it, it's weird how the two that have the highest billing are also the two with the lowest pay. Is there a reason? Is it just what they're providing versus what we do? Because I mean, it's, it's literally the top two over on one side, the bottom two on the other.
Yeah, we align with Medicare rates, so whatever Medicare puts in place with, that's, that's what we follow. So a lot of these are imaging companies, so while they relatively bill higher for their services, you'll see the Medicare reimbursement rates are significantly low, and I don't want to belittle them, but they're, they're taking a picture of, you know, a portion of their, the body. So, it's not labor-intensive as some of the other programs and services.
We're going to get an email.
I know. You're welcome. So, like Deputy Director Crutchfield mentioned, you know, the indigent care program, also known as the Manatee County Healthcare Plan, or Good County, was built to provide medically necessary services, and these are some of the requirements that were outlined in the initial documentation that was provided in 2013 to this board. So some of those talking points obviously still hold true to this day. We want clients to be educated and be provided with preventative screening, early intervention, and disease management. We want to ensure that we have innovative and research-based programs that are patient-centered, which means we focus on primary care for these individuals, rather than that costly acute care that we've seen in the past. We want to ensure that we're coordinating care and ensuring that participates take responsibility for their own health. We also want to leverage information technology systems to ensure people are getting access to quality care, and we want that structured reimbursement in place, like we mentioned. That Medicare reimbursement allows us, allows the county's dollars to go farther than if we were paying traditional fees for these programs and services. So again, as outlined in the original plan, it was documented that we would treat, or we would look to seek treatment at local clinics, rather than, instead of going to emergency rooms for everything. And again, that was outlined in the original documentation that was provided and approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2013. Unfortunately, what we still see is a, is a utilization of costly emergency services. So last year, out of the $1.25 million that this board approved, about 92% of that went towards hospital-based care. And as Deputy Director Crutchfield mentioned earlier, it's because of some of those earlier programs that we taught these individuals that that is the appropriate level, appropriate way to access care, rather than a less costly primary care provider, or an urgent care, for that matter. Looking at a report by ACHA last year, again, we identified that there were 1,600 low-acuity clients that received services in the emergency rooms here in Manatee County. And again, why that's important, because low acuity means that they're less likely to have an emergent condition, and are more appropriate for a less costly and less acute level of care. So they potentially could receive treatment at a primary care provider or an urgent care, rather than accessing through the emergency departments. And while each of the different programs across the counties, the 67 counties in the state of Florida are different, all of them focus on primary and preventative services, with some, some of our local counties, specifically Pinellas County, will not pay for any emergency services with their healthcare plan that they provide.
Hey Jeff, Commissioner Cruz got a question.
Yeah, I have a question. If this was originally designed to do one thing, and it's clearly seemingly doing the opposite, what went wrong? Like, what, what broke in the middle? I mean, it's originally designed to have people go to local clinics for preventative care, and instead, 92% of the care is hospital-based. What did we miss here?
I think one of the challenges is the local hospital has an outpatient clinic as well. So if you were to combine your primary care provider and an emergency department in a same static location, you're actually telling people that that's the way to access care, and they don't understand the difference between an outpatient clinic on the right side of the building and an emergency department on the left. So I think that's one of the things that we need to focus on as we transition to this community base, is we need a considerably different location, off-site, and a different provider type, rather than having all of those under one umbrella that is a hospital-based program.
So, then differentiate, HCA and Manatee Memorial are popping up with these, these ERs, these like small ERs. Is that where you want to drive people to? Are you wanting to drive them to that location?
No. The emergency department, whether it's freestanding or standalone emergency room, is going to be roughly the same cost. So what we're looking to do is partner with community providers to get them into preventative services, to screen for chronic diseases, to ensure they're accessing regular primary care, because then we can care-manage and not have those crises that are going to push those individuals to the emergency department.
Some of these facilities exist, Lawton Childs, you know, MCR.
Yes.
Are you proposing we duplicate those services, or that we do a better job of steering people to those services?
Yeah, our recommendation is that we more utilize those community partners that are doing great work in, in, in the area. So, one of the recommendations is to additionally support our federally qualified health center to ensure that they have access to the, the resources necessary to ensure that they can divert clients from that costly ER. And some of those things are same-day appointments, telehealth services, after-hours appointments, and things like that. So those are the things that we would recommend, because again, even if it is an urgent care or an after-action, or an after-hours appointment, it's still going to be significantly less than accessing through the emergency rooms. So lastly, I just want to touch on, the original program also had a cumbersome and costly software requirement, so that was the Health Information Exchange that Deputy Director Crutchfield previously mentioned. So while it's meant to exchange health information through a plethora of different community partners, what this program actually did was constricted the, the healthcare services, because providers did not want to participate in the program, because, one, it's very burdensome administratively, because they had to enter in medical data into their electronic health records, in addition to this other health information exchange. And the other thing, it was extremely costly, with providers having to pay upwards of $50 per provider. So, a lot of the community partners that wanted to partner with us and provide indigent care in an outpatient or off-site setting, were no longer interested in the program because of this costly program that was put in place. So, as previously mentioned, as of June 1, we expect to see a decrease in the availability of certain services, specifically radiology, lab, and therapeutic services. On the next slide, you know, we'll outline some of the staff's responsibilities immediately after identifying these, these gaps in services with the indigent care program. But again, I think it's important, you know, while we only have one acute care hospital that's providing services to the indigent client, again, they make up about 92% of the total billing for this program, so it's extremely important that we transition quickly and have a more cost-effective program in place to ensure they get access to less acute care.
Hey Jeff, real quick, there's other services that, that are going away, other than this radiology lab and therapy, correct?
Yeah, yes, they did send out a list of programs. They, this is, this is what was provided in the actual release itself, so we wanted to make, make sure we stayed true to these programs, and I think what they did is lumped some of those, you know, therapeutic services, while there might be 12 that are going away, they lumped those under one, you know, kind of subcategory, so.
Okay.
So like I said, immediately after being notified, you know, your health services staff immediately hosted community meetings to ensure we could identify those gaps that were going to be needed to, to fill with your indigent care program. We met with our system of care meeting, and those individuals are community providers that focus on indigent care in the community, their county-funded programs, and we wanted to ensure that we, we included them in these discussions early on to ensure that we were meeting their needs as well as the county residents, so. And what we identified is that, obviously, lab services, radiology, chemotherapy, and surgical services were going to be extremely short following this June 1 timeframe. So within the first two weeks, we identified and expanded our service to a off-site radiology program and lab services. So again, what's that's going to do is decrease the amount of cost for these different services and provide it in an off-site location. And then we're also actively talking with radiology partners and surgical suites to ensure that we have access to those different types of service lines, again, outside of the hospital setting. And while we understand it's a work session, we did want to come with you, bring to you a couple solutions that we think are prudent, and that we would like to see at a, you know, future board meeting. So, starting with the actual indigent care itself, you know, actually, before I get started on that, I would like to say that each of these recommendations is conditional cost. So, each of these is a reallocation of unused health services funds. So again, no additional program expansions, this is just a reallocation of current dollars that you all have approved previously. So, starting with that indigent care program, we'd like to see an expansion of the program itself. Last year, the board approved $1.25 million. We would like to see a significant increase in that amount, again, reallocation, reallocating hospital-based funds and putting it more towards those community-based providers. For number two, we would also like to eliminate barriers to participating and streamline different programming. So, as Deputy Director Crutchfield mentioned, we have a pharmaceutical program, program here in Manti County, which hasn't been updated since 2015. One of the challenges with that is that the requirements of that program are different than the indigent care program. So, for example, somebody might qualify for diabetes management, however, they wouldn't qualify necessarily for the pharmaceuticals that would treat that diabetes. So I think it's important that we sunset the previous program and align it with our current indigent care program, so the requirements are exactly the same. Another thing that we wanted to see is update the content eligibility criteria and remove the, the Health Information Exchange requirements. So what that means is, the state recently updated their eligibility requirements for their, what's called Volunteer Healthcare Provider Program, from 200% of the federal poverty level to 300%. So based on that recommendation, if the board approved moving forward with that increase, we'd likely see about 500 to 600 individuals that would enroll in this program or be eligible for the program. That's important to note, because all of the different volunteer healthcare provider programs across the county are moving to that 300% requirement. So with that 500 to 600% or 600 individual increase, we'd likely see about 2,800 people enrolled in this program. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, while a lot of individuals are eligible, about 10% of the population that is eligible actually enrolls in these different programs and services.
And that's 500 to 600 more individuals than currently qualify at 200%. So 300%, it opens it up to more people.
Exactly, yep. So we have anywhere between 2,000 and 2,200. So we'd like to, we would likely see upwards of 2,800 if we were to make that change. I think it's important to note, again, I said the federal poverty level was just over $30,000, so we'd see about a 15,000 increase for a single individual closer to that $45,000 range that would be eligible for these different programs and services.
Jeff, I kind of messed you up though, but can you explain the HIe?
Yeah, of course.
And how the healthcare?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, so like I mentioned, the Health Information Exchange is there for multiple providers in a network to share health information, in a nutshell. And like I said, while it was originally designed that way, it's actually very cumbersome and it's decreasing the amount of providers that are enrolling in this program, which means we have less points of care within the community. So, what we'd like to do is, instead of just eliminating, we just don't want to make it mandatory anymore. A lot of our community providers do utilize the program, and we want to allow them to do so, but we don't want to mandate it anymore. We do want to utilize it for billing services, which will streamline our billing, because a lot of them are still in paper form. So again, it'll just speed up the process for us to collect and get these first. The other thing that it'll do is it'll lean more heavily on the resources that we already have in place. So we have case management and care coordination teams with the Community Health Program that operates out of the EMS suite or the EMS division. Anybody that enrolls in the indigent care program is immediately contacted that week to start care coordination, because again, we want to, early on, we want to educate these individuals and make sure they're accessing the most appropriate level of care rather than that costly acute care service. And I think, you know, now would be an important time to bring up, you know, we just got an email today about a success story that I'm sure, you know, Deputy Director Crutchfield will share with you, but recently an individual that was homeless was accessing the Community Health Team through their programs and services. They offered case management, they got them situated with the Homeless Outreach Team beds at the Salvation Army that this board approves. They managed their chronic diseases and conditions, got the individual sober, and we just got notification that they were housed just today. And so that's one of the amazing success stories that this team is doing on a daily basis that I think is important to note. So, if we did eliminate the Health Information Exchange, it would just push those individuals more towards that care management team, and they're extremely effective and good at what they do. And I think it's more prudent that we get them care management than, you know, have an electronic system in place that's, you know, somewhat burdensome to the local providers. Next up is the recommendation, again, to partner more with the local federally qualified health center. So MCR Health operates many different FQHCs around the county. They're one of the largest in the nation. They have some programs and services which focus on ER diversion. I mentioned the telehealth services, the availability for same-day appointments and after-hours appointments. I think it's if we offer these individuals in the community access through the, it's going to significantly decrease the utilization of the emergency room and again, decrease the amount of funding for these different programs and services, because obviously accessing through a primary care provider is going to be significantly cheaper than your emergency room cost themselves. And the last thing we want to look at is potentially enrolling or, excuse me, partnering with additional nonprofit agencies to increase enrollment capacity. So about 57% of all individuals enrolled last year in the indigent care program through the hospital. So if we eliminate that requirement or that opportunity, one of the things we need to look at is, do we need additional enrollment assistance through another community partner? Do we need to increase their capacity because of the administrative burden of signing individuals up for the program? Those are the near-term solutions. We do have a couple of long-term for you all to consider. One is a no-cost clinic and pharmaceutical program. The state just approved free pharmaceutical programs or no-cost pharmaceutical programs just last year. And what it does is allows for a repository of donated pharmaceuticals to be collected and dispensed in accordance with state statute to individuals that can't afford it. So there's an opportunity there. Also, looking at increasing mobile solutions and additional education and outreach efforts to ensure individuals understand where to access care in the community. Again, expansion of the ER diversion programs here in the community. And again, looking at different alternative support models that other communities have used, specifically looking at reducing the reliance on county-supported programs and linking them with state and federal initiatives.
Jeff, when you're talking about mobile solutions, are you talking about increasing, I know they have a bus that goes around and whatnot, are you going to increase durability to have another, a couple more mobile, like, I mean, basically a mobile doctor's office is what they are?
Yeah, and I would defer to them, but I think they have the capacity currently. They don't have the operating cost to get those out in the community as often as they would want to. So I think just by, you know, offsetting that cost, we don't need to buy an additional mobile unit, but if they had additional providers that could go out in the community more often, then that could potentially be a solution to make sure we're bringing the care to them rather than waiting for individuals to engage the healthcare system.
Well, I think that's what part of it is, is that bringing the care to a certain location and being able to have those individuals be there appointment-wise or whatever, rather than to go to their individual homes.
Yep.
And that's, so is that what your ideas about mobile salute, I mean, being able to get out more in the community?
Yes. Yeah, I think one, there was one, there's a couple of opportunities here. One, obviously, MCR Health has their mobile units. They have dentistry, their primary medical units as well, optometry services, all provided in a mobile and a remote setting, so they can bring them to a central location, maybe where we don't have access to a primary care clinic. The Community Health Team also does an amazing job doing outreach and mobile care to ensure that anything that can be managed out in the field or in a remote location is done so, again, reducing the cost burden of them going into a centralized location or, you know, having them going to an emergency room for something that they don't need to.
Would that include like a community paramedic program?
Well, and I would, you know, I would defer to Chief Crutchfield, or excuse me, Deputy Director Crutchfield as the resident expert on community health, since he designed, you know, one of the premier programs in the community and...
Yeah, Commissioner, I think what you're asking is how is going to get done? And right now, we don't know all the particulars. We just know that there's a proof of concept and it has proven to be efficient and effective here in the community. So what we would like to do is just capitalize on what has been working and give some funding out to the individuals to see if they can increase capacity. So, like Jeff was saying earlier, MCR Health has multiple vans. They have multiple that are provided in vans and in like campers, I guess I would call them. You know, how can they increase capacity? What is needed to increase capacity? And would that be something that the board would support? That's why it's a long-term solution, because we need to bring a little bit more information to the board. But the community paramedic team and the community health team, they're rock stars. You know, I'm a little bit partial to them, of course, but we do, we do have a nurse practitioner who provides prescriptions to individuals at the time of need. Then the social worker will pick it up, deliver, it's full range of services.
How many providers do you guys have right now that are like doctors, nurses, CNAs, PAs and stuff like that that are working with you guys that go out in the community?
It fluctuates, because we like to capitalize on free labor sometimes with interns. But right now, we have a nurse practitioner, a nurse, a licensed clinical social worker, two community paramedics, two outreach case managers, a clerical person. So I think the entire team itself is up to nine. I would need to verify.
So like for someone needed for like dental healthcare, you're working with LECOM to...
Yeah, there's...
Use their soon-to-be graduated students to go out and...
Yeah, so the community health team utilizes a couple of different resources in the community. LECOM is one of them, and also Turning Points have a dental clinic.
Yeah.
So from there, with the board approved free transportation, it's really easy to get individuals access to care should they want it. You know, that's part of the challenge too, is, you know, linking the social worker up with these individuals and making them understand that, you know, dental hygiene relates to heart health and everything else.
Okay. Commissioner Nelson Bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Telehealth, is there a telehealth angle and what is it? And is it near-term or long-term?
Yes. So I think that when we're talking about things, we have to pull up a little bit higher and think of it as a system-wide solution. So currently, from a systems perspective, the 911 dispatch center is implementing a telehealth platform, and that will be implemented fully next month. What that's going to do is it's going to partition off non-emergent 911 calls out of the 911 system to get them connected to a provider. So, I've stubbed my toe, my back hurts, I have an upset stomach, those types of things will not get in ambulance, not go to the ER. And what we've historically seen are individuals that are indigent or disenfranchised accessing healthcare resources through the 911 system. Okay? So after that, what we are also looking at is different community partners to put telehealth platforms within nonprofit providers in the community. Do you want to? I'll let Jeff talk about, we've been in contacts with TGH. They have a pretty interesting platform, and I'll let Jeff talk about it.
Yeah, just briefly, we just took a tour up there, and there's a couple of different opportunities that are tiered specifically. One is little as about $2,000 that we could implement. And what that provides is remote patient monitoring options. So you can actually check blood pressure, heart rate, you can look at an otoscope and whatnot, and all of that's done through a telehealth platform, and that's the least expensive. So we could pilot that with relatively little cost to anybody. The program they have in place is part of their employee health benefits program. It's actually implemented in the hospital. So they have a room established with all of the different capabilities, and individuals can go in whenever they want to and receive telehealth services. So that would be a potential opportunity for our community providers that don't have access to healthcare to provide those services in-house at a significantly reduced cost rather than sending them to a secondary location.
And Jeff, that's like done through a kiosk. So like, for example, I think we talked about maybe putting one at Department of Health or somewhere near a community health facility where we could see patients if they needed to come to a facility or if they don't have a cell phone. Most people have cell phones, but if we don't, then we could put something there.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I think the sweet spot is, is that we have access to so much data. And if we were to reflect back on that org chart, we have a data scientist that can kind of pinpoint us to where, you know, these resources can be best utilized. We know that people have a high increase of utilization at Turning Points, Salvation Army, and that's kind of why we internally have had some discussions on what that would look like, putting a phone booth-style approach for these telehealth platforms. I would call that long-term pilot alternative support models, but if that is something that the board would support a more aggressive approach with, I know I'm excited about it and so is the rest of the team.
Charlie, would that be something we could put at under one roof? That type of kiosk or...
Yeah, that's exactly what, one of the purposes, the wraparound services under one roof.
I think, and we can find data to see where most of these calls come from, to see where it would be best fitted. Another thing also, Jimmy and Jody are both going to Esri this year with Charlie and I, and we're looking forward to it. But we're also looking into something to help with 911 call volume, which is Amazon Connect, but I'm sure there's a lot of other services that we'll look at too, to see what options are. But it's to help with our call volume, but it could also help us screen some of the callers to find out if it's emergent versus non-emergent and if we can connect them with other resources. And that's been really successful in like, I think it was Charleston County, so we've reached out to them.
So, I still have the floor, sir, and I'm going to transition this discussion over to the county attorney, because I know that there are certain protections in place in emergent situations, right? Specifically, they're usually geared towards good Samaritans. But what we're transitioning from responding to an emergency situation now to actually providing healthcare, and there have to be, this has to expose us to additional litigation potential when you're talking about someone writing prescriptions for something, right? Diagnosing someone over the phone, writing prescriptions, telehealth, all this sort of thing. Does it expose us to additional litigation? And if so, should we have a discussion about that?
Good question, Commissioner. Yes, I think it absolutely could expose us to additional liability and litigation. And, you know, this is the first I've heard at this work session of this plan or idea. So, we don't have a request for legal services or we haven't delved deep or been asked by staff, at least I don't believe we have, have we? And that's just something I'm not aware of?
Sure. So, the provider that's housed in the community paramedic team is a nurse practitioner, so she has an independent practice license. So, just like our medical director, she, or that individual, is liable for the services she provides. We did do an RLS, and I can get you that number.
The county's office?
It was, it's been a year and a half or two years ago, so.
Oh, okay, so it's something I haven't...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, telehealth would fall under that as well? And I feel like there's, we're still, somehow, we're still ultimately, you know, I'm friends with a couple of PI attorneys and they find a way. They all live in fancy houses on the water and they find a way, you know? Good guys, don't get me wrong.
I think that that would be a CAO question. I mean, I, we, the telehealth providers themselves, whoever that vendor would be selected to do, I mean, I'm sure it'd be some contractual arrangements that would go through the CAO, but also, they're providers, they're physicians.
They are, but I also see 911 operators making decisions, saying, oh, we're going to transfer you over here. And there's, you know, they're good at their jobs, I'm not saying they're not, but you know, I might, you said, you know, they stubbed their toe, my head hurts, my arm hurts, but then it turns out I'm having a heart attack, right? But that was missed. These are my concerns, and I know literally nothing about healthcare and I thought of that, so.
I can do a better job explaining it. I apologize. So, the 911 calls are prioritized by emergency medical dispatch protocols. The protocols themselves are mandated by physicians, and our medical director signs off on how those protocols are utilized. So literally, it, question by question, the physician, Dr. Nunnell, has said, you can use this protocol or you cannot use this protocol. They're part of an accreditation process, so it's all been approved, but what happens, it's a warm handoff. So, the caller still has an option to say, no, I want an ambulance. The 911 call taker stays on the call, and should that call escalate, the ambulance will go. It gets transferred back, so.
Okay, I like the intentions, I like the idea, I like the general plans. It's just the devil's always in the details, right?
We definitely are not the first to use telehealth in the 911 dispatch center.
Okay, and we know the road to good intentions, we know what that's paved with, so.
County attorneys.
With that being said, we placed a tentative agenda item on the June 11 board and look forward to answering any of your questions.
Can I add one more thing really fast? So, just for more of the public, because I think we've briefed all the commissioners individually, but just to be clear, hospitals, because of MTALA, are still required to treat patients in an emergent condition. So do you want to kind of just touch on that and this is really for everything else, correct?
Of course, yes. So a law was passed in, I think it was 1984, and it requires that emergency departments treat individuals regardless of their ability to pay for emergency services.
Yeah, I just don't want the public to look at this and go, oh my gosh, we can't go to the hospital anymore. That's not what this is specifically, but we're looking at a more proactive approach to keeping people from going to the hospital.
The CVS had been a role to play in sort of the public service announcement part of this?
Yeah, we work very closely with our partners in Community Veteran Services, and we want to ensure that the changes that we make here are echoed throughout their messaging as well, because one of the things that they do is they engage individuals that need housing assistance or things like that. They may also qualify for our program. So we want to ensure that that messaging, again, is echoed throughout multiple departments, so we're speaking the same language.
And then one last thing in closing, just before we transition over, we, these are all just recommendations based on a discussion for the commissioners to have. Nothing is set in stone, but we didn't want to continue developing some of these short and long-term plans until we knew what the will of the board was. And so for a little bit of direction here, so anything that we do, once we get to the point of looking at contractual agreements, we'd be going to the county attorney for an RLS.
Okay, real quick, so on emergency care, so if somebody walks into Manatee Memorial's earnings room, they're in a... emergency room, they're indigent, they gotta take them, they gotta take, stabilize them. Are they admitting them or shipping them down to Sarasota Memorial, which is indigent care? I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we're talking, that's what we're talking about here. I mean, realistically is, we have a for-profit hospital that is no longer taking indigent care, but they require by law to take them if it's an emergency situation. Are they also same, under the same law to admit them into that hospital?
If they, if it's an emergency care, that they would have to admit them for that program and service. And I think it's important to note that there is a, a state law called the Healthcare Responsibility Act, whereas if an indigent care, uh, was being provided outside of a county, uh, we're still responsible for, to pay for that service. So let's say if, if somebody here in Manti County goes to Sarasota and receives treatment, that bill would still come towards us because they are indigent and it's not the burden of the county where the treatment is provided, if that makes sense.
No, I was just worried about the care that they would receive.
Yeah.
And make sure that, you know, to make sure they're not getting kicked out because they're, they're going to transport them to some indigent care hospital or take, you know, no-pay hospital basically for indigent care and they're just not getting shipped down the street.
Yeah. If it's medically necessary care, then that, that would be provided at that location. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, we've been in discussions with Bay Care, you know, they're building their nonprofit hospital in North County and they've been a part of the, you know, uh, ongoing communication about long-term strategy here in Manti County and they're excited to, to partner with us on different initiatives even before the hospital opens up in 2027.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but it's 2027. So, you know, so, all right. Is that, any commissioners have any other questions of?
Yeah, I have one thing to add. Uh, this Thursday, Manti County Rural Health did ask for a meeting with myself and Courtney. Uh, I don't know what the topic is. I assume what it might be, but, uh, that meeting is this Thursday at 2:30.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Bishop, when I, when I got elected, my predecessor told me that now that you're in office, a lot of people are going to come ask you a lot of questions. And he said the answer to, he's a banker, mind you. He said, the answer to every single question will always be the same. Money.
Money's the answer. What's the question?
That's it. And that's what he said. He said, just sit down with them and say, the answer's money. What's your question? Pretty much. So.
All right. Any other questions? The board or anything? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I'll do is open up for public comment. If anyone has any public comment regarding the switch over to a community-based care from the hospital-based care, please come forward if you need. I see none. I'll close public comment. Is there any other, um, any other thing from the? All right. We'll be adjourned then. Thank you very much.